Good afternoon. This is the first of five public hearings on the fiscal year 25 operating budgets and FY25 to 30 Public Services Program and Fiscal Policy for Montgomery County Government, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, WSSC Water, and Montgomery County Public Schools. Council committees will conduct work sessions on the budgets beginning on Wednesday, April 10th, and full council work sessions will begin on Monday, May 6th. The committee schedule is available on the council's website. Council members Juwondo and Mink are expected to be joining virtually today. Each registered speaker has three minutes to speak. You will hear a tone when your time is up. We have a very large number of speakers registered to speak today, so we would greatly appreciate everyone abiding by and being respectful of their allotted time so that everybody has an opportunity to testify. Also, as a reminder, please refrain from applause or noise approving or disapproving of other testimony. Everyone who is registered to speak has and should be afforded the opportunity to testify and to share their words with us. Please also refrain from interruptions or distractions so that we can focus on the speakers. Also, per our rules for the hearing room, please do not hold up signs that will block someone's view, and please keep the aisles clear so that residents can enter and exit and so staff can do their job. We plan to take a brief break today at approximately 3:15 PM. For those interested in viewing the eclipse, we were planning on taking a brief break to provide an opportunity to do that and thought that we would align it with the timing of the eclipse. We would ask that anybody who is partaking in that be safe, not look directly at it, use the appropriate eyeglasses, or avoid it. With that, we are going to call on our first group of speakers, and then we will after we recess, we will rejoin just before 3:30 and we'll continue on with the remainder of our speakers. With that, this first hearing panel will be David Engel, Monique San Fuentes, Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, Peter Lowitt, and Douglas Reamer. If you could come up to the table, and when you're ready, hit your button. And Mr. Engel, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
I am here to present the Commission on Aging's top priorities which require additional funding to the fiscal year 2025 operating budget. I am David Engel, Chair of the Montgomery County Commission on Aging. These priorities are not only crucial to the well-being of our aging population, but without a doubt will benefit the other county boards, commissions, and committees reaching their goals. We're thankful that the A&amp;D budget this year has a recommended increase of nine FTEs, but we feel the county can do better. Our number one priority is hire a full-time, permanent communications, marketing, and outreach person in the Department of Aging and Disability Services to develop creative new ways and use proven methods to provide information to the incredibly diverse population of older adults. Regardless of income or the language spoken, residents are unaware of the vast array of services and programs that are available for older adults. The Commission has undertaken two new programs to address this need that could use a county employee. As you know, our commissioners are volunteers, and we like to sustain and grow these programs. Number one program is the Ambassador Program. We started it in the last six months, and we've done over 10 presentations to the community. We've reached over 150 residents, and we have eight more presentations scheduled. The number one comment we hear when we do a presentation is, "I had no idea all this was available." We also have a library liaison program. Our commissioners are going to all the Montgomery County Public Libraries and ensuring older adult flyers and notices are in the sections and stocked with relevant materials. A full-time staff person, ideally at some point a communications team dedicated to communicating about services available to older adults, is needed. The county executive is aware and generally supports our request. He has commented that the Public Information Office is well-staffed, which it is. It now has an older adult team member, which it didn't previously. And the COA is asking, though, that we have sufficient funds added to the budget to implement our request for Aging and Disability Services specifically. Number two, we'd also like to hire, have the county hire, a full-time implementation manager to ensure that the county executive's mandated Home and Community-Based Services Workforce Task Force recommendations are fully recognized and carried out. The county exec mandated a task force in 2022. The task force found a lack of direct service professionals due to, among other things, lack of training and limited opportunities for advancement. There is a special need for linguistically and culturally diverse caregivers. Is that my time? All right. While during the county executive's remarks, he did note that this is a labor issue, and he's working with Workforce Montgomery and WorkSource Montgomery about the possibility of a consultant.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Monique San Fuentes.
President Friedson, Vice President Stewart, and members of the county council, good afternoon. I'm Monique San Fuentes, here today as Chair of the Greater Bethesda Chamber of Commerce to comment on the proposed FY25 operating budget. The chamber has formed a work group to study the budget and will be taking a closer look in the coming weeks. At this point, we want to share our initial thoughts and concerns. Regarding MCPS, we strongly request continued funding for workforce development and the Construction, Automotive, IT, and Hospitality Foundation programs, which help our students prepare for careers in those fields. It's time for increased transparency at MCPS, and not just for fiscal issues, but also related to the treatment of staff as well as the safety of students. Regarding public safety, we support full funding of the police budget. You'll receive a more detailed letter about our position shortly. Looking at the Bethesda-Chevy Chase area, we support full funding of the Bethesda Urban Partnership, the Pike District Partnership, and the Friendship Heights Urban District as important tools for making those areas even more attractive to business, residents, shoppers, and visitors. Regarding the FY25 budget, we believe that it is not sustainable and may require tax increase as soon as one year from now. One-time revenues should be limited to one-time expenditures. Even though the county executive has said that the budget doesn't include tax increases, we've uncovered a number of hidden fees. Here are some examples, as we are still finding more. The multiple-family rental housing licensing fee is doubling from $50 per unit to $100 per unit, increasing costs by more than $3.8 million. The short-term rental licensing fee is seeing a 233% increase, going from the current $150 per unit to $500 per unit. And the solid waste disposal charge is increasing by more than $8 million. Our primary focus is on the best use of funds for economic development. It's the best way to build our tax base and better the lives of county residents. We're greatly concerned about the huge cut to the MCEDC budget. By cutting its FY24 budget by almost $2 million, the MCEDC will face its lowest funding level in at least five years. We have yet to fully understand the reason for the reduction, but it seems likely that MCEDC may be forced to reduce staff and scale back its critical business recruitment, expansion, and retention initiatives. We need to learn more about whether the executive's new economic development initiatives will bear fruit. In the meantime, we respectfully encourage the council to consider the wisdom of pulling much-needed funding from an organization with an economic development mission to fund other projects whose results are unknown. We've painted broad brushstrokes today. We'll be taking a closer look at all issues over the coming weeks and look forward to continuing conversations with council as budget cycle proceeds. Thank you for considering our testimony today and for all that you do for Montgomery County.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Jeffrey Johnson.
Good afternoon, members of the county council. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, and I am Chair of the Montgomery County Community Action Board. I want to thank the council for your ongoing support of critical issues impacting lower-income residents. We appreciate the council's support for the Community Action Agency's Volunteer Income Tax Assistant VITA program. Last year, the agency's VITA program completed 1,946 tax returns with a total free tax impact of $7 million, linking clients with $3.1 million in earned income and child tax credit. We also thank the council for your support of our board's free advocacy training program, the Community Advocacy Institute. You will hear from all 14 current participants during these budget hearings through in-person and written testimony. As the governing body for the Community Action Agency, which works to address the needs of lower-income county residents, our first priority is the agency's immediate staffing needs. For many years, the agency has used its federal community services block grant funds to pay for brokers who support the agency's work. While the CSBG has remained the same, personnel costs have increased. At our current funding level, this July, we will lose one longtime broker, a human services specialist at the TESS Community Action Center, a second full-time broker, a navigator position that serves the Up County region, and we will need to reduce one full-time human services specialist at the TESS to half-time. The brokers at TESS are providing the exact same services as their merit staff colleagues. They support TESS's work, a small office that serves between 500 and 600 residents monthly in the Long Branch area. People come to TESS because they trust the staff and know they will receive culturally and linguistically specific services from a center that has been serving the community for over 50 years. I want to emphasize that because this navigator position is the only one serving Up County starting in July, we will no longer have navigation services in Up County. We ask the county council to add $214,000 to the agency's budget to keep these critical positions. Next, our board requests full funding for the Working Families Income Supplement. In the coming days, you will receive our board's sign-on letter supporting WFIS. Organizations that directly serve and advocate for lower-income residents have joined the letter because they understand how powerful WFIS is. Please fully fund the Working Families Income Supplement in 2025. Our board continues to advocate for more equity between Head Start and Pre-K so that children in Pre-K will receive the same wraparound services. We also advocate for transitioning part-day classes to full-day programs to better meet the needs of these families. Finally, noting the significant affordable housing challenges, we encourage you to make affordable housing, including services for lower-income renters, a key priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Peter Lowitt.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity. My name is Peter Lowitt. I'm the Executive Director of Mobile Medical Care, a community health center that participates in the Montgomery Cares Program. Today, I'm testifying on behalf of the Montgomery Cares Advisory Board, on which I've had the honor of serving for many years. MCAB has laid out several funding priorities across the five program areas of healthcare for the uninsured. We're pleased that the county executive included some of them in his recommended budget. Today, I'd like to highlight the two highest advocacy priorities for MCAB going forward. The first relates to the Montgomery Cares Program, which supports primary care for low-income uninsured adults. We urge the council to increase the fee-for-service reimbursement rate to a regionally competitive rate of $175 per encounter. Safety net providers are currently reimbursed at only 41% of the average actual cost of care, even as many clinics already leverage volunteers and donated services. At that level, clinics are at risk of not maintaining financial sustainability. We're grateful that the executive has included $1.8 million in his recommended budget, which will close the gap between the current and requested rate by a third. That's a wonderful and meaningful start, and we ask the council to adopt that increase. But we also ask the council to find a way to close the gap further between the proposed $125 rate and the $175 target rate. That target rate would cover 70% of the cost of care, which would be a smart, cost-effective public investment. The pandemic has taught us all that addressing health access and health equity is essential to the well-being of our entire community. The other priority that MCAB would like to highlight relates to the Care for Kids Program. This program serves low-income uninsured children, cannot eligible for Medicaid or other public insurance. Unsurprisingly, the number of children served by this program continues to grow. With a dramatic increase in enrollment and the return to pre-pandemic care levels, additional funding is requested to cover any current deficit and respond to the anticipated growth in the coming year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Douglas Reamer.
President Friedson and Vice President Stewart and the council members, hello. I am here representing myself, Doug Reamer. I'm a community activist. I do a lot of programs in the community. I've been doing them for a long time, and I'm also a member of the Sports Advisory Committee that's just up and running. So it's been a lot of fun working with such great people to come up with some solutions and ideas to find ways to get more kids to participate, right? We all know that that's something that we're trying to do. Unfortunately, there has not been as much success, in my point of view, with the students that I work with. I've also been a teacher in Montgomery County Public Schools for 20 years. I've been at Einstein, Northwood, Springbrook, Northwest, and now I'm at a middle school, Newportman Middle School. So not only am I seeing sports on the outside, I'm seeing what it does on the inside of schools, and it's very frustrating, so many kids slipping through the cracks on a daily basis, myself included, when I was growing up, and a lot of my friends. And I was the only one that had a chance to make it out and pursue what I'm doing these days. So there is a lot of opportunities that are out there right now, so I'm not saying that there's not, but I think that we ought to find another way to make it more accessible. I think relying on asking kids what they want to do is not a valid strategy. I think that they need to try a lot of things first and then decide. I don't think we should go into communities and just assume that we should do certain sports in those communities. It should be, let's offer a lot of different things and bring in people that have that type of experience, because, again, we cannot expect a young kid, a young person, or even families, right? A lot of families have that bias, that their kids are going to do this, but then, you know, baseball is what I do most of, and soccer translates to baseball, and you get those players that are athletes, and they come in and they have a chance to do something with it. I'm not just talking about going to college or playing pro. However, there are a lot of opportunities if you play the multiple sports. So I also think there's an opportunity for education for parents. I think we're missing that boat, to give parents an opportunity to ask questions and find out from different people from across different areas, not just in the neighborhoods that they go to. You know, and the Sports Advisory Committee is working hard to come up with solutions to that. The Rec Department is a big part of this push and cuff in Montgomery County parks as well. I know I have unfortunately been, I have received grants in the past from them, but it's been dwindling down, dwindling down. And usually I coach about 2,500 kids a year by myself, and this year I can't see myself even going past 1,000 because I've lost a lot of that funding myself through those organizations. And, you know, it breaks my heart because those are kids I talk with, those are families I talk with, and I'm not gonna lie, I still do it, but then it's coming straight out of myself, my pocket, and, you know, I think there's a lot that we can do, and I don't think it's that hard. So let's give it a try. When the other committee members come up, really listen to what they have to say because they're more professional, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel, Pamela Yerg, Alan Cohen, Joseph Hook, Samalia Lopez, and Esther Wells. Pamela Yerg, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some of my community experiences and observations with you and to testify to the vital importance of our community recreation centers. My name is Pam Yerg. My husband and I have lived, worked, and raised our family here in Montgomery County for the past 38 years, and the community center was basically our home base of operations. In January of 2020, I retired as the Director for Special Olympics, Maryland, Montgomery County, where I served for 20 years, and, interesting timing, and have served for several years as the co-chair of the Friends of Potomac Community Center. In those 20-plus years, I've been very grateful to the county council, to Maryland State leadership, and the leadership of Montgomery County Recreation, in the recognition of the need and support of projects that I've been most closely associated with, those that serve people with disabilities and seniors. In the past four years, the recovery curve from the pandemic has a different one for all of us, to be sure. During the time when the world shut down, our community centers did not. They continued to serve the community through flexible and creative ways by providing school lunch replacements, vaccination coordination, information resources, safe election sites in a national election. And as we began the long process of reopening our lives, the community rec centers provided information, resources, and options for safe, critical, social reconnections and recreation. I believe we all learned valuable lessons from the pandemic. One of the most valuable to me is the vital importance of community. We must take care of those around us. It's the responsibility of each of us to care about community health and wellness, and the community rec centers are the anchors of that in this vast Montgomery County. The Montgomery County demographics are rapidly changing, many more seniors than ever before, many more young families and people with special needs and incomes that are stretched thin to support their life's critical expenses. The need to provide additional operating money to allow the department to provide low-cost or no-cost programming, community outreach efforts, and communication is critical. These types of program opportunities allow all of our community members access to social, physical, emotional, well-being programs and services. True, the Rec Department has added some beautiful new facilities, but the remaining facilities are utilized in record numbers with drop-in programs, programmed activities, rentals, fitness rooms, classes, outdoor fitness options, senior activities, and youth programs. Many community rec centers are between 20 and 40 years old and are in need of refresh projects as well as forward-thinking outdoor exercise projects alongside that. The need to add resources to the replacement budget is critical. This will allow for paint, new carpet, new fitness room equipment, replacement of water fountains, appliances, the list goes on. Community health and wellness begins in the community recreation centers, and we must all advocate for the value that they bring to each of us. Thank you for your consideration and for your advocacy.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Alan Cohen.
Timing, we did not plan this, and I did not know what she was going to say, but Alan Cohen, and thank you for the opportunity. I've spent the last 40-plus years with two passions in this county in helping IFE, Montgomery County, and one is the community centers. There are two items that are so important, and Pam pointed out. It's interesting, there are 43 facilities at the Department of Rec, and I know Gabe knows it better than anyone else. With a population of 1,53,000, there are more than that number of interactions in the centers, in those buildings during the year. Yet, the number of career employees is around 180. The number of part-timer seasonal is 2,800. I kept asking the staff, why are they always advertising for positions? You know, are we an employment agency? And that's the reason. There is nothing other than the outdoor pools in the Department of Recreation that's seasonal. So these buildings need more permanent staff. It will make a difference, it will be better for customer service, public safety, and I can go on and on, but I can't urge you more to think about increasing and eliminating. How do you run when you're constantly hiring people, and they're leaving, and they're coming? And we have some very great seasonal people, but it's difficult to run an operation which is in that situation. The second Pam also pointed out, and I'll use the word PLR, which you're familiar with, Planned Life Cycle Asset Replacement. We build beautiful buildings, but we don't maintain them. I've had an opportunity to visit all 43 facilities and critique and inspect and look at them. And my friend David Dice, head of General Services, you know very well, jokes, Alan, we can't meet your standards. Well, it's not my standards. You pay for it one way or the other. It's important that you give the money for PLR. In the old days, each department had some handyman that could do things. Now everything goes through General Services, and David has hundreds of buildings to handle. So you have to consider, how do you help the individual departments? My other passion is the animal shelter. I founded McPaw, the nonprofit partner. Some 10 years ago, we opened a $20 million beautiful facility, and again, you can look at some of the needs there. I'm working on just trying to replace the front chairs. It's embarrassing if you saw what they look like, and I wasn't going to mention those. But the care really is on the animals. Spay and neuter is not funded this year, and it's so important. It will pay for itself, but you need to have the grant process of funding spay and neuter. We have a new director, Caroline Harefield, who started last week, and she has a great opportunity to take the document with the MADDY Fund Report that has just been completed, which is a blueprint for success. And the last thing I mentioned is the pet food pantry. We do a pet food pantry at St. Jude's Church twice a month. We've done it since COVID. The county used to, again, provide grants for pet food. They do not, I encourage you, to also add funding for pet food grants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Joseph Hooks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Joseph Hooks, founding director of 40 Club, been serving Montgomery County through my own LLC for the last 11 years. Currently, right now, pretty much helping out around 1,000 youth in from different capacities. First, I just mentioned from DHHS, I have my student athlete ambassador program, has 25 high school athletes, helping 100 youth through not only football instruction but virtual well-being check-ins. With MCPS, I serve in after-school time funding to help 60 boards at two middle schools after school. I'm at four high school wellness centers with four other team members, helping a minimum of 300 with intensive positive development. And through the Collaboration Council, I do sports and soccer program where I'm serving at least 300 through clinics and teams. And then lastly, Holy Cross, where I'm working at two rec centers doing K-FIT program. I'm just here today, I love the lineup we have to analyze. One is, could you really please analyze the wellness center budgets, DHHS, every high school, depending on the years, on different terms of funding? We all have the same main scope that we need to provide. So, for example, Seneca Valley is the biggest school, it has the least amount. That's really hard on our staff, it's hard on our partners, being a partner to really meet the need. So I just really hope that you guys look at all the wellness centers and fully fund them, but also look at a safety standpoint for us as frontline staff. I want to thank Luis Cardona for the bill training, but we need to look at the safety that we're doing every day on the frontline. Second is to please fund MCPS and after-school time. I know Jennifer Strobel is doing a great job leading that, but that programming is, funding is not next year. So without that, mentorship is big with consistency, and right now, we can't return to those middle schools without that funding. It's really important to be really consistent at schools in need. Right now, we're at Montgomery Village in Hillsville, who sincerely need it. And also thanks to her on Election Day, I'm running a free football clinic for the whole county to learn from college stars at Latony Field. Third, ironically, is transportation. I was here years ago advocating about that. Nation of all even quoted, we have all these programs, but kids can't get there. All right, this weekend, I had to use a daycare van to get kids to Philadelphia to see a college, and we have a soccer program from Sider Mill, and they could not get to their game at Robertson Park. That is very sad, so please help out with that. And then lastly, I just want to thank council member Lukey and Sales for their advocacy for the facility planning project. That is a very key step, because we all have been impacted by rec centers, and I believe all you have, if it's a mentor or a coach or a program. Montgomery Village is very unique, it is bleeding, it is in need, and we need you guys to approve that funding to start that process. It's a lot of community members and grassroots organizations that really can impact that through food and security, education, and I say community center because it's all about the top-down, elders to kids, not just the youth. I'm big on sports, but I also love the arts, the STEM, the education, and I believe we deserve the same thing as every other Montgomery County resident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Amalia Lopez.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Amalia Lopez, the Deputy Director of Girls on the Run, Montgomery County, a member of nonprofit Montgomery. I'm also honored to serve on the Sports Advisory Committee, recently created by this county council. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you, council member Albernaz. Thank you for the incredible other members who have taken part today with their knowledgeable, dedicated service and understanding of the needs of the community. We've identified a need for prioritizing quality, accessible, inclusive, and equitable sports programming in the county. So I'm testifying today in support of fully funding key budget items, including the 3% inflationary increase on contracts with nonprofits. This will allow the organizations that serve the most vulnerable populations in our county to keep up with rising expenses as a bare minimum, keep up with the programming. Secondly, fully funding both the Rec and Parks Department will support programming and facilities that you've heard about, as well as new opportunities. Finally, that will support organizations that work with those county agencies, just like Girls on the Run. I've been fortunate enough to be working with Girls on the Run for over 10 years to provide accessible and inclusive programming to girls in Montgomery County. It's an outside-of-school time program using running and skills building as a way to build confidence in elementary and middle school girls, using the idea of achieving a 5K as a way to build confidence. a way to build confidence. So this past month was Women's History Month. I want to recognize the historical precedent number of women sitting on this council today and let you know that programs like Girls on the Run are what help these girls to grow up, build confidence, and become the leaders of tomorrow. So, to quote one of our participants after she practiced for the whole season and finished the 5K, "If I keep trying and practicing instead of just waiting, I'll do things that I didn't think I could do." So nonprofits like Girls on the Run work to serve their missions, but also help the county with priority areas. Prioritizing racial equity and social justice, the participants of Girls on the Run mirror the county, both in race and ethnicity and in income, providing over $150,000 of financial assistance. Girls on the Run serves 4,000 participants every year. Like many sports and after-school activities, Girls on the Run is also implemented in schools experiencing high rates of absenteeism and juvenile delinquency to increase attendance and provide safe activities for kids after school. So by fully funding not only nonprofits, but as well as our rec and our parks, you can ensure that our nonprofits, our nonprofit partners, and our sports providers will be able to continue to help the county meet their priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker on this panel, Esther Wells.
Yes, sir.
Just need to hit your button.
All right.
You got it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council President Friedson, council members, staff, and community members. My name is Esther Wells, and I am the president of the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. To learn more about us, please check us out at our website at www.mctaxpayersleague.org. The objective of the Montgomery County Taxpayers League is to educate and advocate for county taxpayers. We support appropriate actions to achieve greater efficiency and effectiveness in Montgomery County government and tax equity for Montgomery County taxpayers. I want to reiterate that taxpayers share the same values as the county government. We want to have a balanced budget that fully funds all of the items that taxpayers believe are important. This year, the council voted 7-4 in favor of a 4.7% property tax rate increase to fund our schools. In hindsight, there wasn't a budget emergency last year that required a tax rate increase, which is evidenced by the 15% fund balance reserve above and beyond the required 10%. Thank you, Council President Friedson, for your courage to be the only council member to vote no to any property tax hike. Your fiscal stewardship of taxpayers' hard-earned money has MCTL optimistic about this budget season. Taxpayer fatigue is one of the leading causes for residents and businesses choosing to migrate to places outside of Montgomery County and Maryland. Montgomery County must focus on growing its economy and remaining competitive. We cannot tax or fee our way into more revenue. MCTL recommends three items. First, MCTL recommends that the council reverse the 4.7% property tax increase and impose inflation limit on revenue increase to CPI, which will get the reserve down to 10%. Last month, MCTL leaders advocated to the Charter Review Commission to oppose all three potential charter amendments. Without the loophole in Maryland state law to circumvent Montgomery County voters' desire for unanimous vote for property tax increase, this year's tax hike would not have happened. Second, the county's stated policy of using one-time revenues for one-time spending is a good one, and the council should stick to it. MCTL recommends that the council return to taxpayers the excess reserves. Alternatively, council should utilize the excess reserve for high-interest debt reduction to reduce the operating budget impact, which is currently 6.4%, or $450 million for payments and interest. Third, MCTL recommends that the council eliminate its use of general fund supplemental and special appropriations to approve and fund non-emergency spending outside of its regular budget process. Combining these three recommendations with spending cuts and reducing county government will establish an operating budget that is accountable and transparent to taxpayers. Lastly, comment for MCPs is to restore funding to GoGuardian. It works, and I've personally seen the benefits for it for special education. The cost benefit is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel, Bruce Adams, Courtney Hall, Rosalia Kilde, Amzie Heck, and Karen Leggett. Bruce Adams, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
I'm ready. Thank you very much. So I want to make four points. One, we have an extraordinary park system of which we can all be proud. Demonstrably, the current staff and resources are not sufficient to maintain the park system at the level of excellence we would all like to achieve. Failing to give Montgomery Parks at least the same service as budget will lead to further deterioration in the quality of our parks. Public-private partnerships should be more of a valued part of our effort to achieve excellence in the face of limited public resources. So former Parks Director Mike Riley regularly referred to Shirley Povich Field, Capitol Crescent Trail, and the Brookside Gardens as the three crown jewels of Montgomery Parks. As the founder and president of Bethesda Community Baseball Club and the leading advocate on the county council for the Capitol Crescent Trail, and now a board member of the Coalition for the Capitol Crescent Trail, I know something about two of these. So Shirley Povich Field was built by the Bethesda Community Baseball Club, and our organization has worked tirelessly to maintain its excellence for the last quarter of a century. Paving the first leg of the Capitol Crescent Trail from Bethesda Avenue to Little Falls Parkway was paid for by Pepco. That private sector donation was used to leverage state funding for the paving from Little Falls to the district line. Not a county dollar went in the original paving of the trail. So I want to share one story to make my main point. A few years ago, the Coalition for the Capitol Crescent Trail funded the Neil Potter Plaza at the trail right near River Road. Almost immediately, the park looked shabby with weeds and cigarette butts everywhere. So our coalition complained, and we asked for a higher level of maintenance. We just invested money, we wanted it maintained. Didn't happen. The solution was obvious. Our coalition had money in the bank. We could hire Bethesda Urban Partnership to maintain the park. Win, win, win. We would stop complaining, the public would be better served, and equity could be advanced because Montgomery Parks could take the maintenance funds slated for the Potter Plaza and spend it elsewhere to upgrade maintenance at another park. So when I first proposed this, I was told, we don't do that. We have a maintenance budget. We're responsible for maintaining that park. We don't contract out. Really? Why not? You're not doing an adequate job. No one's job is going to be cut by the contracting out because the money will go to improving equity across the county by using the funds at another park. We don't do that. So I went to Mike Riley and explained my proposal. He immediately agreed, and the result has been as expected. Potter Plaza has been maintained at a higher level. We at the Coalition of the Capitol Crescent Trail, we can complain about something else, and the money was available to be put to good use elsewhere. I can tell you similar stories about Povich Field. But the folks at the top level of parks absolutely understand partnerships. I'm not complaining. But not all the implementers do. It needs to be easier for public-private partnerships to serve the public interest and reduce the pressures on those of you who have to make these difficult budget decisions. So please, at a minimum, maintain the same service budget in Montgomery Parks, but use your voices to strengthen the public-private partnerships.
Thank you. Next speaker, Courtney Hall.
Good afternoon. There are a couple of things I'd like to highlight in the county executive's budget proposal. One, I'd like to highlight that there's funding in there to create three peer-support specialists at Progress Place in downtown Silver Spring. This is especially important, given the increase of behavioral health needs that we've seen. So I appreciate that and urge you all to keep that money in the budget. The second is that there are significant financial resources for shelters and housing. We all know that we saw a significant increase in shelter, and supportive housing is a significant part of that. So I would encourage you all also to leave that money in the budget, please. Thank you. We at Interfaith Works often talk about our shelter and housing programs, but I'd also like to highlight some of our prevention programs. What we know, and I'm sure you all share our experience as well, is that prevention program, in order for prevention programs to succeed, really, they need to have sustained investment. And of course, we know the best time to invest is right now. Too often, we find that we're having to turn people away and divert them to possibly receiving services elsewhere, or in some cases, having to wait until we can afford to engage them. Again, that's just based on our resource constraints. Our Connections Program is a good example, and many of you refer, many of your constituents to reserve emergency financial assistance for, to help them remain in their homes and also to prevent utility from being cut off. In 2022, the number of people receiving rental assistance was 218. In 2023, it was 358. Just at this point in the fiscal year, we've already helped 415 people. We had to turn away 300 families between September and December because we ran out of money. I just heard from the team again today, we've got about $40,000 left, and we probably will be spending that money by the end of this month. So your help with this program would be very, very helpful. Also, our job placement program. Over the past four years, we helped over 400 people secure jobs. Collectively, they earned over $10 million. It's fantastic. These are Montgomery County residents, but our waitlist for that program is six to eight weeks. Also, our food pantry program. We're part of the county hub network, and as many other hubs are seeing, we have more need than we have resources. So we want to do more, we want to do better, we want people to be able to shop twice a week instead of once a week, and we'd like to be able to continue providing that high-quality food. So three requests. One, consider making the clothing center and Connections Program a part of the county's base budget. Many of you, again, refer your constituents, so I know you're intimately familiar with the success and the need for that program. Provide strong support for the job placement program, vocational services, which helps people get back to work. And then lastly, continue and provide even more support for our county food hubs. Food insecurity is a big issue in Montgomery County. I know each of you care about it, and I would urge you to continue providing that level of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Rosalia Kilde.
Council President Friedson and members of the county council. My name is Rosalia Kilde. I live in Rock Creek Woods, community of Silver Spring. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about the budget for Montgomery County Public Libraries. Like many of you, my childhood has been full of great books, thanks to public libraries. I discovered my current favorite book at Montgomery County Public Libraries, the unofficial ultimate Harry Potter spellbook. A great way to start off my week is when my mom, my sister, and I go to the Kensington Park Library on Mondays after school. I usually go to the children's section of guides, crafting books, and graphic novels. I also sometimes check out a chapter book if I have enough time. The reason that section is so amazing is because librarians put a lot of hard work into finding good books and organizing them for that section. Library staff have helped me find good books when I can't find them on my own. They also organize a scavenger hunt every month. If you find all the pictures hidden around the children's section, you get a free prize at the front desk. They also have a week every year when you can read to dogs at the library. They are so adorable. Being a librarian takes a special type of person. In addition to loving books, they also need to be able to stay focused on the needs of children and other readers at all times. This can mean adapting to new technologies, it can mean meeting challenges like the recent pandemic, or it can mean resisting efforts to restrict the core mission of libraries to enlighten and expand our world. For all these reasons, I ask you to undo proposed reductions in the budget for library staff. If anything, we should be increasing our investment to better compensate those who work at the library. Today, as well as hire additional staff to support growing demand on the system. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and hope that you will consider my thoughts as you work on the budget. Thank you all for, thank you for, thank you for all you do on behalf of our great community.
We certainly will consider that testimony. Your testimony is a great way to start off our week, and I will say, sitting in this seat earlier, taking your picture, you look very natural in this seat, and something tells me you'll be back in this seat in a more formal capacity at some point in your life and career. Thank you for joining us. Our next speaker, Amzie Heck.
Good afternoon, and thank you esteemed council members. I'd like to thank each of you for your support and demonstrated commitment to EveryMind's suicide prevention and mental health services in Montgomery County during the last and many previous fiscal years. My name is Amzie Heck, and I serve as the Chief Advancement Officer at EveryMind. I want to introduce you to a client of ours, Marie, a 71-year-old caller to the Montgomery County hotline. Marie reached out because she was experiencing constant stress and anxiety, but her therapist was unavailable, and she couldn't afford additional support. When Marie called, she was in distress, yelling for help. Our crisis hotline counselor, Erfon, was there to assist her. Erfon patiently listened and helped calm her down. By the end of the call, Marie apologized for her outburst and expressed gratitude for the support she received when she needed it most. Marie's and Erfon's story is one of hundreds of visitors we serve on the Montgomery County hotline every day. Marie's story highlights two vital concerns that I want to bring to you. The county executive's recommendation to decrease funding for the Montgomery County hotline and the 988 lifeline to 1.9 million for FY '25, down from $2.2 million in previous cycles, is deeply concerning to us. This reduction in funding is specifically to the Montgomery County hotline and jeopardizes our ability to support residents like Marie, particularly our aging population, who rely on the hotline as one of the few lifesaving available services supporting mental health and combating isolation for the older population. With a significant portion of Montgomery County's population over the age of 65, and projections indicating a 113% increase in older residents by 2040, maintaining current funding levels is imperative. Older adults represented 57% of all incoming calls from Montgomery County hotline last year. Cutting resources now would deprive the county residents of crucial support during their times of need. Secondly, while we appreciate the proposed 3% increase in nonprofit contract funding, a more substantial increase, up to 6%, is needed, especially in the mental health and human services sector. With nearly half of the U.S. population residing in mental health shortage areas, and Maryland reporting shortages in quality mental health care availability, competitive compensation is essential to attract and retain talented counselors doing lifesaving work like Erfon. EveryMind urges the county council to ensure the Montgomery County's nonprofits receive the necessary resources to provide the services and support that our residents desperately need. We implore you to allocate additional funding to address these pressing issues and continue providing exemplary service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amzie. Our next speaker, Karen Leggett.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Leggett Aberia. As far as we've come, the drive for equality is not over. Haben Germa made that comment during a Zoom class I taught recently with politics and prose featuring seven authors with disabilities and differences, including Haben, the deaf-blind woman who conquered Harvard Law. Seven authors demonstrated that intellectual prowess, skilled advocacy, and creativity can flourish no matter the disability. Montgomery County has a range of services and opportunities for people with differences, much of it on display yesterday when 400 people attended the Transition Work Group Resource Fair at Montgomery College. I'm speaking here today as a citizen and a mother to ask Montgomery County to take a few more steps toward equality. First and foremost, we need to raise the developmental disability supplement from 3% to 4.5% to fund salaries for direct service providers. This is essential to accommodate new individuals entering the system and to keep pace with the increase in minimum wage. DSPs are the individuals who work at all hours to care for our citizens with disabilities, bringing them into the community, teaching them new skills, making them comfortable in new environments. These are not minimum-wage jobs and should be recognized for the skills they require. We proclaim Direct Support Professional Week each year in Maryland, but let's provide a proclamation with an impact: money in a paycheck. Secondly, I'm asking for funding in the Department of Health and Human Services Office of Aging and Disability to support our young people with disabilities through their transition year. This is the year they leave high school, typically between 18 and 21 years old. The search for what comes next is exhausting, perhaps more so in a county with many options. So many people come to the resource fairs saying they don't even know what questions to ask or where to begin. This staff person could improve collaboration with MCPs Transition Services and coordinators of community service agencies to maintain communication with families. We need to make sure no young person falls through the cracks because there wasn't someone who could offer an explanation. Finally, I'm requesting full funding for the Department of Recreation so they can continue and expand their adaptive recreation programs. I had the pleasure of watching a young man learn to kayak last summer. He was very nervous about even getting into the adapted kayak, but an hour later, I could see him paddle up Seneca Creek with a big smile on his face. And that confidence will bleed over into many other activities in his life. Well-paid DSPs, transition help, and adaptive recreation, it all contributes to the drive for equality. bleed over into many other activities in his life. Well-paid DSPs, transition help, and adaptive recreation, it all contributes to the drive for equality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next panel, Ellen Ivy Paul, Shannon Babe Thomas, Father Brian Jordan, Gordy Brenney, Amy Ackerberg Hastings, and Brandon Wright. Ellen Ivy Paul, when you are ready, you have three minutes.
I thought you pushed it, sorry. My name is Ellen Paul. I live in Bethesda. I've lived in Montgomery County for thirty-seven years. My husband has lived here for twenty-seven years. I'm speaking as a taxpayer and a citizen. As birders and hikers, on almost every weekend day and holiday of those twenty-seven years, we have been in one of the county parks or conservation areas. To us, the parks are an essential part of our lives. The parks are an essential part of life even for those who never set foot in the parks. Many of our parks, such as Little Bennett, Little Falls, the Cabin John Regional Park, protect water quality, reduce runoff, and prevent soil erosion. Lake Needwood and the Rock Creek Regional Park was created specifically to prevent flooding and protect the creek by trapping sediment from swarm water runoff. The parks also protect our wildlife. They have become oases in a matrix of dense development and overdevelopment. Our parks also promote mental health, education, and the natural sciences and recreational opportunities. Some of us love our parks so much that we volunteer to help maintain those parks. For instance, my husband and I plog, which is basically a word for picking up trash as we hike or bird. I have taken from Block House Point five tires, a metal bed frame, and an entire car bumper. In 2020, just before I retired, I became a weed warrior. This is a group of trained and certified volunteers who remove non-native, non-invasive plants from our parks. It's a very serious problem. Since nineteen ninety-nine, we have logged over a hundred-and-forty-one-thousand hours of volunteer service. In 2023, we logged a record-breaking twelve-thousand-four-hundred-ninety volunteer hours, freeing over seventeen thousand trees and shrubs from non-native invasive vines and tackling other destructive plant species. Our work is a significant cost-saving for the county parks, reducing staff hours and benefiting the environment by using non-chemical methods. Other volunteers maintain the trails. My husband and I also do annual bird surveys run by the parks. The Natural Resources Stewardship and Resource Analysis Team is already understaffed. Only ten people plus some temporary contract workers handle vegetation ecology and wildlife ecology, and that's to cover thirty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-eight acres and four-hundred-nineteen park units. The budget would decrease the Parks Department's requested increase. I don't understand that. I know there's no proposal for a rate increase, but our assessments are projected to go up by twenty-one percent phased in over three years, which is seven percent a year, far in excess of inflation. We will be paying more, a lot more. There should be ample funding to award the parks the full increase requested. This is an essential service and should be funded as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Shannon Babe Thomas.
Good afternoon. I'm Shannon Babe Thomas, Executive Director of Community Bridges and also a board member of nonprofit Montgomery. On behalf of Community Bridges, I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to the county for its continued support for community bridges. For twenty-six years, we've been dedicated to empowering girls from diverse backgrounds to become exceptional students, positive leaders, and healthy young women. Our impact is especially profound in Montgomery County, where eighty-five percent of our families have an annual income of sixty-five thousand dollars or less. Our holistic approach spans a decade, from third through twelfth grade and beyond, providing after-school programs, mentoring, college access and success initiatives, and family support. This year alone, we've touched the lives of over five hundred young women and over twenty-five-hundred family members. Our college success program is a testament to our commitment. This year, we've worked closely with both high school seniors and alum within college who have faced challenges with the new process. Our support and advocacy were instrumental in helping them to navigate this complex process successfully. Without our intervention, many of these students would have struggled to access financial aid opportunities crucial for other education. Every girl in our program knows that college is within their reach. Thanks to our mentorship and comprehensive support, we've been proud of students like Hadassa from Blake High School, who, after joining CB in third grade, discovered her love of acting in the arts through our CB Girls program. In fact, the first time she was ever on stage was at our annual showcase. She's now pursuing her passion for acting in film. She's exploring opportunities at institutions like Juilliard, Pace, Towson, and Catholic. And in fact, we had the opportunity to take her to Juilliard and Pace for her auditions. So she's going to go far. We're super proud of her. As the Executive Director of Community Bridges and a board member of nonprofit Montgomery, I urge the council to consider the 2025 operating budget with a focus on supporting nonprofits like ours. I advocate for raising the proposed inflationary adjustment from three percent to six percent to meet the growing needs of our community. Additionally, I request support for the county executive's proposed budget for the Office of Grants Management, emphasizing the importance of continued oversight and funding to sustain our vital services. The challenges we face, including a hundred-and-fourteen percent increase in transportation costs for field trips and events. I know you heard earlier about transportation. That's the biggest thing the nonprofits are facing right now for our youth, and they don't want to be in school. They want to go out and see the world and see the opportunities ahead of them. We also look at a four percent increase in rent and the necessity to provide a competitive staff salary. We want to pay our staff what they should be paid. A six percent increase in funding will ensure that Community Bridges can continue its mission of empowering young girls to excel academically, lead positively, and thrive as healthy young women here in Montgomery County. I want to thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Father Brian Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the Montgomery County Council. Father Brian Jordan, the pastor of St. Camillus Parish and the administrator for St. Francis International School, both are directly across from Joanne Lillik Elementary School in Silver Spring. Both of our parish's young children attend public schools in Montgomery County, including Joanne Lillik Elementary School, which is scheduled for demolition in July and to be openly occupied in August of 2026 as a new building. Therefore, we want the best for all schoolchildren, whether they attend public or parochial schools. I emphatically support the rebuilding of Joanne Lillik Elementary School with one moral condition. What is that condition? My primary purpose here today is to take a stand. Permit me. A strong stand. A strong stand for building trades unions, who are the foundation of our country. To build this wonderful school of Joanne Lillik Elementary School, why not? What's wrong with unions? They are the foundation of the middle class. School buildings built by the building trades unions guarantee quality work and professional expertise. When I testified last month at the planning commission, I discovered that Joanne Lillik Elementary School will be the largest public elementary school in Montgomery County. The taxpayers' expense of sixty-six million dollars. Oy vey. If that is true, I respectfully request that Montgomery County Council ensure that this school be built union, with labor with prevailing wages and benefits and rights with safety. This school has to be built well, with nine-hundred-and-fifty or more students will attend this school, grades kindergarten to fifth grade. The children are our future of this county and of our country. If the school is not built union, then I do not understand why you jeopardize the future of our schoolchildren with poor workmanship, possible wage theft, and exploitation of immigrant workers. I hope and pray we learned some hard lessons from the recent bridge collapse in Baltimore. Six Latino workers were killed, and one of their relatives lives in my parish. Members of Montgomery County Council, please vote for union labor to build the largest public elementary school in our beloved county. I submit for testimony an independent, nonpartisan study that proves that union construction is far more advantageous and more cost-efficient than non-union public contractors. Please, build it union.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Gordy Brenney.
Gordy Brenney with the Taxpayers League. Like many of you, I've been watching a lot of basketball lately, and I'm fascinated by how unpredictable the results are. Equally interesting is the popularity of accountability and transparency for describing policy and budget challenges. But like game plans, they won't work without incentives and performance targets, which should be added to the budget as part of your governance process. This year, for redemption, after last year's budget debacle, taxpayers want accountability and transparency from both you and county agencies. First of all, let's roll the taxes back. In hindsight, there wasn't a budget emergency last year that required a tax rate increase. Much of the increase had nothing to do with our schools, but was spent giving county employees huge pay raises of over ten percent and supplemental appropriation projects not approved in the budget. The spending affordability guidance you approved in February 2023 failed. Combined with record appraisal increases, the tax rate increases result in too many fixed-income property owners and renters getting clobbered with over twenty percent property assessment increases and ten percent tax increases every year thereafter, while county employees got record pay raises. Projected reserves exceed the performance target by one-hundred-and-six million and should be returned to taxpayers by rolling back the tax rate increase and restoring the CPI limit on tax receipts. Implement more spending incentive controls. Increased staffing and pay increases should be tied to program performance, and any general wage adjustments should be conditional upon completion of an updated comparative salary survey last done in 2011. Create budget incentives to improve performance and defund program strategies that aren't cost-effective. Then share the performance data with taxpayers so they can see what they're getting for their money. For example, how many more low-income kids will become proficient in literacy and math next year? Would tying spending above the maintenance of effort level to achieve achievement gap reductions improve performance? And can interventions in tutoring for all struggling kids, that's about eighty thousand kids in our system, be paid for by cutting excessive non-instruction costs, forty-five percent of MCPS spending? Or how much will crime be reduced by this budget? And would separating the nine-one-one call center, as Fairfax has done, spur innovations to reduce response times? Or how many new riders could be added by shifting bus capacity to popular routes? Or how many more affordable housing units are going to be started next year with the additional subsidies? Or how many more residents could be served by reallocating HHS spending from programs serving fewer than fifty percent of eligible residents because they either duplicate other programs or aren't needed after COVID? Or can WSSC's proposed eight-and-a-half percent rate increase be cut to five percent to incentivize capital improvements that would reduce the terribly inefficient twenty percent lost water rate and other waste? Thank you. There's more in our written testimony.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Amy Ackerberg Hastings.
Good afternoon, President Friedson, members of the county council, and staff. My name is Amy Ackerberg Hastings, and I am the parent of a Richard Montgomery High School sophomore and one of the MCCPTA cluster coordinators for the seven RM cluster PTSA's. My objective today is to advocate for Twinbrook Elementary School to finally be included in the Linkages to Learning program. We are delighted that county executive Elridge supports bringing linkages to this Title One school. As a reminder of this fantastic program, for over twenty-five years, MCPS and the county's Department of Health and Human Services have partnered with nonprofits to bring family and health services, as well as community education and development, to high-need school communities. Participating schools receive two to five additional staff, including case managers and family therapists. Although Twinbrook's farms and EML rates are higher than those at six of the twenty-four current Linkages elementary schools, and although its farms rate has steadily increased since 2004 from about fifty percent to over seventy percent, Twinbrook is one of the eighteen Title One schools omitted from Linkages. We are grateful that the Maryland blueprint designated Twinbrook as a community school. That liaison has worked hard to build a network of resources and partnerships, such as a youth and family counselor on loan from the city of Rockville who is in the school two days a week. However, some of the nonprofits offering job counseling and English language classes are a long bus ride away for the families who need these services, and none of these supports are the same as having multiple full-time staff on site. When families move into Twinbrook service area from schools with Linkages, they immediately notice the difference in available resources. At least one new student has such severe mental health needs that their Linkages counselor volunteered to continue meeting with them, even though the student's official placement has ended. We have had difficulty ascertaining why bringing Linkages to Twinbrook is taking so long. For instance, we have heard that a school has been expected to have ample newly-built vacant space to be approved for the program, although this requirement may have recently changed. Since Twinbrook's renovation has been perpetually delayed through the same twenty years of dramatic increase in community need, we feel trapped in a catch-twenty-two. Nonetheless, we are patient and persistent people, so this testimony represents an opening salvo as we work to bring before you Twinbrook parents and support from the entire RM cluster. In closing, I ask the county council to direct DHHS to establish Linkages to Learning at Twinbrook Elementary School. Please note that I also submitted written testimony containing further details about Linkages, along with discussion of our cluster's operating budget priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this panel, Brandon Wright.
Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, Montgomery County community at large. My name is Brandon Wright, and I'm an employee at the Department of Homeland Security, where I lead several IT programs. I also live in Potomac, and I learned that today, Mr. Friedson, that makes you my representative. Most importantly, I am the father of a third grader at the Darnstown Elementary Autism Learning Center, and I'm here to provide comment on MCPS's decision to change the funding and support structure for that center going forward. As parents of children on the autism spectrum, we understand the critical importance of individualized attention and specialized support is key ingredients of academic success for our children. Every child on the autism spectrum is unique, and as the old saying goes, if you know one kid with autism, well, then you know one kid with autism. These kids present unique challenges that require labor-intensive approaches to enable them to access the curricula of their peers in an equitable manner. The Darnstown ELC has been a beacon of hope for families like ours, providing specialized education to meet the diverse and unique needs of these students. The success of the Darnstown program hinges on their ability to offer support and to tailor unique strategies to meet the needs of students with ASD. Students like my son, who can cognitively perform at or above grade level on most tasks, however, can verbally communicate at about the third percentile. In order to meet the individual education, i.e. P plan, needs of students like my son, a great investment is required towards individualized, specialized support. Speaking from previous experience, I am fully confident to sit before you today and say that a more general, specialized education environment with fewer on-hand paraeducators would simply fail to meet the needs of my son. And so I am fully confident in saying that MCPS's decision to dissolve the autism program within Darnstown ELC is simply a step in the wrong direction. By cutting crucial support and specialized resources, MCPS is depriving our children of the specialized attention that they need to succeed. This decision not only undermines the progress that our children have made at this center, but it also sends a troubling message about MCPS's commitment to supporting students with autism. In the early days of my son's diagnosis, when I was struggling to find the ground beneath my feet, I got some advice from a parent who came before me. He said, "The secret to supporting someone with autism is not just preparing them to succeed in the world, but also preparing the world to succeed for them." So in keeping with the spirit of that advice, I believe that the current Darnstown ELC model of support should represent the future of autism education in Montgomery County, not the past. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Our next panel, Robert Nelson, Christopher Bruno, Gail Melson, Bridget Howe, Jocelyn Toseko, and Brian Anlo. Robert Nelson, when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, President Friedson and county council members. I'm Robert Nelson, homeowner in Goshen and past chair of the Up County Citizens Advisory Board. The Maryland Family Institute recently produced a report available for free download at marylandfamily.org. In the fifty-eight-page report, it's clear that nearly every challenge we face today, from crime to poverty to educational decline, bears a meaningful and enduring relationship with family formation. But families and seniors are really suffering from the impact of inflation over the past three years. Household costs are up over twenty percent. Airline fares, hotels are up thirty percent. I had no car accidents, but my- I had no car accidents, but this month, my insurance premium increased 23% on my 20-year-old car. And back in January, I got this notice that my home assessment increased 39%. That's going to be a big tax increase. Well, families and seniors can't afford this type of increase. When you look at the budget, it's up 4.9% to over $7 billion. In comparison, you know, the average budget of five other states in the United States is just over $7 billion. It's probably reasonable to support new initiatives like the $7 million Innovation Fund that will award up to $100,000 to eligible companies developing innovative technology, design, or processes. But is Montgomery County doing the same to utilize innovative processes and improve efficiencies in county administration? Well, most parking garages, including the new one in Annapolis, have eliminated attendance. But here at Montgomery County Council Building, there's no self-service automated process to pay for parking. Here's another example of inefficiency. I just transferred my home title into a trust. So I filled out a paper intake form, notarized the document, and took it to the Transfer Recordation Tax Office. There were several people behind the counter, but they gave me a used envelope and told me to insert everything in a nearby drop box. Then they called me the next day to pick this up and take it across the street. So I came down to Rockville for the second time, picked up the paperwork, walked across the street to the courthouse land records department, and there were several people behind a counter. Well, this time, they collected $60 fee from me. So why are there so many people needed to do these kind of clerical functions? And why is the taxpayer inconvenienced with bureaucratic inefficiencies and two trips to Rockville? Families and seniors have had to cut their budgets to make ends meet or pay for larger purchases with credit cards bearing high interest rates. It's time that Montgomery County embrace innovation, make processes more efficient, and downsize the bloated bureaucracy. Just say no to a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Christopher Bruno.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks for letting me be here. My name is Christopher Bruno. I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, 42 years, and user of Montgomery Parks. I'm sort of here on a personal and professional basis. From a youth, I've used the parks just about as much as anybody ever has, for sports, hiking, ice skating, Wheaton Regional Cabin John, racquetball courts, just about everything you can imagine. As an adult, I'm an avid trail runner. Someone was mentioning earlier about maintenance of the trails, volunteering, especially right in my backyard, like Frank, Lake Neatwood. As a father and a musician, the COVID-19 hit us pretty hard. So as an unemployed, single dad of a one and a three-year-old, the parks were a pretty important place for me to take kids while they were going crazy and I was going crazy. And professionally, coming out of COVID, I worked for another Montgomery County business 46 years called The Alex Music, and I'm also the bandleader of a band called The Capital Effect. And we have partnered with the parks many times over the past three or four years, providing entertainment of all types, from AV support, talent, roller derby, poetry and comedy nights, jazz, special concerts, festivals, and our band has also performed at a bunch of these events. The partnership has been pretty crucial for entertainment business, as well as sort of our personal coming back. You know, I ran around the trails this morning, and the kids, we go, and I've been to just about every single nature center there we have to offer in this county, and really just here as sort of a personal advocate for the parks and that this budget needs to not only be fully funded, but I think it should be expanded because just not only as a citizen, but as somebody who works with the parks, it is something that we can all do. It is, even if they're not being used, like someone mentioned earlier, they are a crucial part, and they sort of are a welcoming part for our entire county and everybody here. So I appreciate your time, and I'm hoping that we can fully fund the parks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gail Melson.
My name is Gail Melson. I'm a Montgomery County resident for the past 30 years. I'm a retired MCPS teacher, and I volunteer with the parks, as I understand several people do. I'm here today to urge the -- let me say first, I appreciate the job you do, the difficult decisions you're going to be making on the budget issues. I know it comes up every year, but thank you. With that, I'm here today to urge the council to fully fund Montgomery Parks FY25 budget request. I've taken part in several offerings of the Park Department's Program Access Office, including a nature book club and kayaking, but most of my volunteering there and participation has been with the Montgomery Explorers Program. And you're going to learn more about that in just a minute. It's a walking club for residents who are 50 years old or better, as the saying goes. It's a chance for us older folks to get some exercise, learn about the parks, talk with people, and walk in the great restorative outdoors. The staff and volunteer mantra is, "Leave no one behind." The, one of our most -- we have four volunteers on each walk, along with a member of the Program Access staff. One of the most important volunteer positions is to make sure that no one is left behind and that everyone gets to walk at a pace that is comfortable for them. We started in April of 2021 during the pandemic in masks. Today, three years later, we have 12 trained volunteers in place. Every week, the creative and dedicated Program Access staff emails our 550 registered members with a description of the walk for the following Monday, and it includes the who, what, and where information of the walk, along with really valuable information for us senior citizens, things like, is it a natural or paved trail? Is the biggest one, well, parking. The biggest one, of course, is, are bathrooms and porta-potties available? That is often a crucial element of whether people come. It's all free. There's no obligation or expectations. Today, I led, or my husband led, a walk, a typical walk. We had 53, 54 people join us. We walked on the Bethesda Trolley Trail. We also had a tour of the Josiah Hansen Museum, which was a wonderful thing to be able to We have 550 registered members. If they all ever showed up at one day, we would all probably die of heart attacks because what our usual show up is, oh, no. Anyway, there's more information in my comments, and I'll wait for you to join. Even though I know none of you are over 50, we would welcome you, and as we said --
You're so kind.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have your written testimony, and we appreciate it. Next speaker, Bridget Howe.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm happy to be here with you today as interim executive director of Nonprofit Montgomery, which is an alliance of about 200 nonprofit organizations that provide essential services to residents of Montgomery County. 50% of our members are small and emerging nonprofits with budgets under $500,000. We focus on three pillars: capacity building, building connections among nonprofits, and working alongside the county to address operational concerns of current and prospective nonprofit contractors to ensure seamless, high-quality services for county residents. I'm here today to share our initial thoughts about the county executive's proposed FY25 budget. We thank him for acknowledging in the budget the value that nonprofits bring to Montgomery County as service providers, employers, and neighbors. Nonprofit organizations are not just charities, they're businesses that employ over 10% of the workforce in the county and provide services to most residents. Our members represent the breadth of services provided by county nonprofits. This includes essential safety net services like food, housing, and healthcare, mental and behavioral health services, crucial youth development programs, support for vulnerable populations like the elderly and disabled, as well as arts and culture, environmental impact, road safety, and many more subjects. You're going to hear from a lot of nonprofits about the needs of their clients, so I'm going to focus on the needs of the sector. First, the county executive proposed a 3% inflationary increase in his recommended budget. We appreciate that as a starting point, as well as the previous year's inflationary adjustments. However, inflationary pressures have eclipsed the adjustments the county has provided over the past few years. A 6% inflationary is a more accurate reflection of the true costs of doing business for nonprofits that provide essential services under contract to the county. Second, the county executive's proposed budget for the Office of Grants Management is vital to ensuring that it gets past the rocky startup phase we experienced this year and moves into being the robust and effective entity it must be to support the community. Nonprofit Montgomery has appreciated the council's oversight of the office. We hope that continues, and we offer our full support and partnership to help OGM succeed. Third, the county executive allocated funding within his recommended budget to the needs of small and emerging nonprofit businesses, and we strongly support that. The capacity building and technical assistance needs of small and emerging nonprofits are distinct from the needs of more established organizations. These nonprofits have the potential to grow as businesses, employers, and service providers if they receive technical assistance to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations, to create substantive and realistic business plans, to establish connections with other service providers. The closure of the nonprofit village has meant a loss of startup support for the smallest organizations, which are often community-based and led and direct their programs to underserved communities. That money needs to be replaced for those organizations. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jocelyn Toseko.
Hola, wanna start this. My name is Jocelyn Toseko. I'm a longtime resident of Montgomery County, a proud board member of Identity's Board of Directors, a former employee of Identity, and many more youth-serving organizations in our county. As a formerly undocumented first-generation Latina, it was this community that gave me the opportunity to thrive. Throughout my childhood and adolescence, we were fortunate to have the support of my school educators, counselors, city and county programs, and nonprofit programs. It was the relationships I built with the adults in these programs that helped me become the person I am today. So thank you on behalf of Identity's client community for investing in the young people and families living in poverty in Montgomery County, for investing in our futures. Thank you for partnering with Identity because we all know that young people can thrive with the right support at the right time by the right people. With Montgomery County government support, our staff are able to be there when and where the community needs us, providing trauma-informed social, emotional, academic, workforce, and life skills development programs, and offering case management and emotional support services. Today, as a board member of Identity, a resident of Montgomery County, and as someone deeply impacted by the staff that make up the youth-serving profession, I am asking today that the county council add another 3% inflationary adjustment to the 3% inflationary adjustment that the county executive added in his FY25 operating budget. It will enable your nonprofit partners, like Identity, to take important steps to invest in their employees, the employees who, by virtue of their work in workforce development, behavioral health, academic support, safety net services, and more, are investing in the future of Montgomery County. Our people, your nonprofit workforce, and youth-serving professionals are key to delivering the high-impact essential programs and services you and the community expect, and ultimately help create environments for thriving. Like many of our sister organizations, Identity's salaries have not kept pace with inflation or the marketplace, in large part because our county contracts do not keep pace with inflation or the marketplace. It makes recruitment hard, retention even harder, and keeping our most experienced and high-potential employees nearly impossible. Based on a recent compensation study, about half of Identity's employees earn less than the midpoint of their salary range. More than 75% of our employees who left the organization over the last 24 months is due to higher-paying positions. Today, Identity works directly with about 11,000 clients, impacting close to 50,000 county residents every year with about 150 staff, the majority of whom, like me, come from the client community. To support the staff members that help Montgomery County thrive, we ask that you add another 3% inflationary adjustment to the FY25 operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Brian Anlo.
Brian Anlo, on behalf of the Department and Office Building Association, our members have two budget asks of the council. First, we ask that the council increase funding to the County Green Bank for building energy performance standard compliance. BEPS, as you all have started to hear, has the potential to deplete the county's inventory of naturally occurring affordable housing. Our consultant estimates that it could cost between $20,000 and $40,000 per unit to comply with BEPS. Those are conservative estimates that don't take into account things like financing costs, loss of rental income for tenant displacement, and those kinds of things. To offset these costs, the County Green Bank can provide technical assistance, interest rate buydowns, and other creative financing options to building owners. The Green Bank is already delivering these results to the county. Last year, they helped finance a gas, a multifamily gas-to-electric conversion in Tacoma Park at about $4.5 million. That's about 25% of the Green Bank's annual budget allotment. So we ask that you increase the funding and go a step beyond that and allow the Green Bank to bond its existing revenues, to be able to really reach as many building owners and make as many building energy efficiency improvements as possible. Our second ask is around fire safety. AOB has been working with the county and state to make our buildings safer, our member buildings safer, and special thank you to Council Vice President Kate Stewart for working with us on Bill 724 and address our concerns there. We believe that fire safety is a shared responsibility between building owners, tenants, and the county. Currently, county fire safety efforts are split between three county departments. First is DPS, which does building code fire enforcement in the building generally, but not in specific individual units. That responsibility is left to the Department of Housing. They're responsible for fire code enforcement in the unit. And then lastly, the Fire Department does education and outreach. A big portion of this happens in October during Fire Safety Awareness Month, as I think you all have seen. So we're asking that you all create a Office of Fire Safety that can work across all three departments to help streamline efforts, particularly with regard to fire code inspection, because the Department of Housing's inspectors are not fire code experts like you have in DPS or even in the Fire Department. The first order of business for this fire safety office should be to establish a fire alarm and sprinkler system lab, like Fairfax, Virginia currently has. This is a public-private partnership that they establish with as little as $2,700, and they got $400,000 in donations from the private sector to build out this lab that includes fire alarm systems and helps educate building owners, fire personnel, on how to test, maintain, and operate these fire alarm systems. And so we think this is something valuable that we could bring across the river to Montgomery County. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We're going to do three speakers, and then we're going to break. The three speakers on this panel are Nanya Chijine, Steve Silverman, and Melissa Bondi. And while they're coming up, when we return after recess, we'll take about a 10-minute recess, that panel will be Dr. Jamie Doyle, Ji-Yun Jung, Sagid Teklahemi Note, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Yusuf Battle, Sandra Shatz Landis. That'll be the next panel when we return, so to be prepared, to be called up when we reconvene. With that, let's begin with Nanya Chijine.
Good afternoon, county presidents and members of the council. My name is Naya Chijine, executive director of the Montgomery County Food Council. Thank you for considering community perspectives in the annual budget process today. The Food Council is a nonprofit that serves as the primary connection point for community-based food system issues in our county. We do this work in collaboration with many partners on four strategic priorities: food security, local procurement, access to land for food production, and food waste prevention. Today, I want you to know that we are grateful for the county's continued investment to support our work to create a more resilient, sustainable, and equitable local food system. A more detailed written testimony has been submitted, but here today, I want to highlight a few points. Number one, in 2023, the county council adopted a strategic plan to end childhood hunger and established a roadmap for addressing food insecurity for the more than 34,000 children experiencing hunger in our county. I urge you to fund the plan's recommendations beyond the special appropriation to the Office of Food Systems Resilience, OFSR. Number two, I urge you to fully fund the OFSR appropriation within the budget. In its first year with only three staff members, OFSR has demonstrated efficient and effective stewardship of county resources, and it is clear that the dedicated food sector staffing inside the county government is a critical component in creating a resilient food system. Number three, SNAP remains our first line of defense against food insecurity and links food insecure families with reliable funding to buy healthy food with dignity of choice. Maryland DHS has designated the Food Council as a SNAP community benefit organization, which means we're able to take on other organizations as sub-grantees, enabling us to support smaller communities with partner with unique language and cultural accessibility who may not have the experience or desire to directly manage a complicated contract with a state agency. More direct county funding to SNAP CBOs is needed to bring every eligible federal dollar into our county to support our residents. Let's close the SNAP gap in Montgomery County by investing local dollars to support CBOs during this critical work. Lastly, again, we do this work collaboratively. Lastly, again, we do this work collectively with many partners. While reviewing the budget with some of those partners, it was apparent that transparency needs to improve. It was a challenge to determine how funding was allocated across the county and the total investments for each given sector. We hope in future years this process can be refined and improved. I thank you again for your support for the food security of our residents, of local food and beverage businesses, efforts on food waste prevention and diversion, and for your support of our local food farmers. We look forward to continued partnership on these shared priorities, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Steve Silverman.
President Friedson, members of the county council, while I usually lobby you for a client, I have no client today. I'm here on behalf of many others to urge you to focus on the lack of progress on getting third graders to read at grade level. The failure to help third graders read at grade level precedes COVID. In 2023, only 57% of all third graders could read at grade level. 49% African-American children, 33% Latinos, 81% white, 79% Asians. In 2018, it was 47% overall. 35% African-American, 26% Latino, 71% Asian, and 66% white. Not exactly much progress in five years. Here are just some of the recent overall test results for our Title I schools. At our Cola Elementary, only 39% of all students could read at grade level at the end of third grade. Burnt Mills, 35%. Daly, 46%. Gaithersburg, 34%. Lulac, 34%. Contrast that with Bradley Hills, 92%. Attached to my testimony is the entire MCPS school list. Much of the discussion recently about MCPS is focused on accountability, but now, of course, the discussion has moved to how much money MCPS is going to get, not about specific results. That's not accountability. Racial equity and social justice focus is also supposed to be part of the annual budget process, so why not focus on the MCPS budget as well? 25 years ago, Jerry Weiss was the first superintendent to publicly acknowledge the achievement gap, and in response, we implemented K-2 class size reduction in all Title I schools, reducing class size from 27 to 1 to 17 to 1 to start addressing that gap. While you can't dictate the programs of the Board of Education, you do control the purse strings, and the county executive's budget is $132 million above maintenance of effort for MCPS. Is this going to be another year where the only discussion is how much money MCPS gets instead of what results they achieve? So, why not withhold $10 million from the MCPS FY25 budget and appropriate that money to them when they come back to the council with a program targeted to get third-grade kids to read at grade level at our Title I schools? $10 million is 1/3 of 1% of the proposed $3.3 billion proposed MCPS budget. Now, I don't pretend to know what programs should be implemented, but there are dozens of programs around the country that have been implemented to help kids to read. I recently received a newsletter from a council member who said that budgets are moral documents signaling our values, so I ask you, what could be more in line with our morals and values than providing all our kids the chance to succeed? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our final speaker before recess, Melissa Bondi.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, President Friedson and members of the council. My name is Melissa Bondi. I'm the Senior Director for Enterprise Community Partners here in the Mid-Atlantic. On behalf of everyone at Enterprise, we wish to thank the county executive as well as members of the council for your ongoing commitment to achieve committed affordability in both budget and in legislation. This continues a record of consistent increases, including in the budget proposals this year, for housing funding over the past several years. As partners to you and many other practitioners here in Montgomery County, our sector has proven its commitment to leverage local investment with substantial outside resources to stretch county dollars further to achieve more homes more affordably for more residents in Montgomery County. We work hard to deploy the capital and subsidies you provide to meet local needs. Enterprise is a proud member of both the Montgomery Housing Alliance and the Purple Line Corridor Coalition. We know, as you do, that viable near-term projects for affordable housing in Montgomery County will need more funding to be realized even beyond what is included in the proposed budget. Among MHA member organizations alone, our pipeline projects estimate more than $170 million in local funding requests, on top of the millions of dollars in subsidy to be secured from outside partners and sources. To focus just a moment on Purple Line and our most recent Purple Line data, approximately 10,100 homes along the corridor are currently in the development pipeline or are now committed as affordable housing to households earning $70,000 or less per year. That leaves us just under 7,000 homes remaining to achieve our North Star Shared No Net Loss Goal of 17,000 homes along the corridor. That's in part because with higher construction, labor, insurance, and interest costs, each dollar of funding today builds less housing than it used to. Additionally, as projects wait for funding, their carrying and bridge financing costs compound, making the overall cost for the same units more expensive the longer they wait. In order to meet the county's own goals, housing providers need a variety of capital at higher levels than are included in the proposed budget. This is important as Maryland residents cite affordable housing as one of their greatest concerns again this year. Results from the weekend's Washington Post University of Maryland poll shows and reinforces the widespread importance and demand for more housing and more affordability across all typologies, and especially near transit. I want to thank you again on behalf of Enterprise for everything you have already done, for your ongoing commitments. They're not just capital, they're not just budget, but since it's a budget hearing, just want to say thank you for everything that's been proposed so far, and we look forward to working with you to figure out the very best way to invest in current and future residents for housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we are going to take a brief recess. We will return at approximately 3:25, but plan to be here at 3:25 back here. And just to be safe, anybody who is watching the eclipse, please take the necessary precautions to shield your eyes, use the proper eyeglasses, or do not look directly at the light. We will meet back here and reconvene in approximately 15 minutes. Good afternoon. We are back from a solar eclipse break. The only time I will ever say that here, and the only time that it will be said for the next 20 years, apparently. This is a continuation of the first of our five public hearings on the FY25 operating budgets and FY25 to '30 Public Services Program and Fiscal Policy from Montgomery County Government, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, WSSC Water, and Montgomery County Public Schools. Council committees will conduct work sessions on the budgets beginning Wednesday, April 10th, and full council work sessions will begin on Monday, May 6th. The committee schedule is available on the council's website. Council members Juwondo and Mink are joining us virtually. We reminded everybody of the council rules that all speakers have three minutes to speak. You'll hear a tone when your time is up. We have a large number of speakers registered to speak, so we appreciate everyone abiding by their allotted time, by not making noise, refraining from approving or disapproving other testimony audibly, or providing applause and other responses. Those who are in the audience, please don't hold up signs to block someone's view, and please keep aisles clear so that people can enter and exit. With that, we are ready to move on and continue with our public hearing. I see that we have our next panel up at the table with us, ready to go, which we very much appreciate, so we will start with Dr. Jamie Doyle.
My name is Dr. Jamie Doyle, and I'm a single mother of a third grader with autism who attends the Autism Learning Center at DES. As a card-carrying economist, I'm concerned about the fiscal impacts of eliminating the program. I invite you to Google Stock Me. So, how much does this program, we are all here talking about, cost? MCPS obscures this information from taxpayers, but we can derive estimates based on the 129 staffing ratio that has been mentioned to support the program. If we use Appendix A of the fiscal year 2025 recommended budget that includes a salary schedule for staff, given this ratio, then this program costs about $658,000 per year. If there are 68 students currently enrolled, that is a per-student cost of about $9,600. What are the cost differentials for alternatives? If students move to the most restrictive diploma-bound environment that MCPS offers at the Carl Sandberg Learning Center, the cost per student jumps from about $9,600 to about $47,000 per student. If Sandberg does not have the capacity and all county offerings are exhausted, the county then moves a student to a non-public placement, that is, paying for a special education private school at the public's expense. To give you a sense of numbers, the cost of tuition at Harvard is about $54,000 per year, and the cost of tuition for a diploma-bound student at Ivy Mount, which serves students with autism, is $82,000 per year. When a single student enters non-public placement, say, first grade, taxpayer dollars are mortgaged for nearly $1 million cumulatively until that person graduates with their diploma. In 2023 alone, the county spent $44 million on tuition for non-public placements. Collectively, this suggests that a diploma-bound autism program like the one at DES gives the county a considerable cost savings. This is an escalating and urgent issue that warrants your attention, given the increasing prevalence of autism. The number of children of autism right here in Montgomery County has increased by 122% from 2012 and by 38% in 2022. I wanted to close with a final comment. No one talks about taking away wheelchairs from people who can't walk because of budget cuts. For those kids with autism, those parent educators are their wheelchairs, and this thoughtfully-designed program is their ramp to a high school diploma. Beyond the numbers, that's what's at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Ji-Yun Jung.
Hello, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today to you, the council members of Montgomery County. My name is Ji-Yun Jung, and I'm the mother of Isaac, an eight-year-old autistic student. I stand here today because I need your help. This is direct result of Diana Wise, Associate Superintendent, who is trying to eliminate the autism learning program that my son is attending. The program is the Autism Learning Center at Downstone Elementary School and is a specifically-designed program for children with autism. Since Isaac was diagnosed with autism, I have faced many challenges to the extent that I had to even give up my career. Fortunately, with the help of experts, my son started speaking, showing significant progress. A neuropsychological test revealed that while he has a slow speech, he has extensive memory and high cognition. However, due to the usual attention deficit that accompanies autism, it was determined and recommended that someone needs to constantly redirect his attention and focus his concentration for successful learning. Through experts, I discovered that Downstone Elementary School, where children like ours can attend and receive more help, is the only public school program available to help our children succeed with equitable opportunities. However, Diana Wise certainly wants to eliminate the program for reasons that are incomprehensible, starting with the elimination of seven parent educators from just the Learning Center alone. When demanded an explanation, reasons such as the need for more immersion in the homeschooling community and the distance from home to school being too far were given, all reasons that anyone can see are not understandable or justified. Children with autism often have various accompanying disabilities, making the help of parent educators absolutely critical. Taking away more parent educators from DES will clearly diminish the learning rights of our children. Many parents, including myself, I have contacted numerous stakeholders to raise awareness of an incredibly selfish and hostile decision seemingly made by a small group of people. These same people only mention or create numbers, unproven data, and incorrect budgets, and clearly have no interest in the well-being of my children or their success. Nevertheless, parents are prepared to do everything and anything to protect their children. Please help ensure the learning rights of the 68 autistic children at DES. Please help us raise attention to the extreme detriment that the proposed elimination of parent educators will cause. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Sagid Teklahemi Note.
Mr. President, and Mr. Vice President, and the council members, thank you very much for giving me this grand opportunity. And I am here standing here before Latino Health Initiatives, and my name is Dr. Sagid Teklahemi Note, and I am a psychiatry profession and international graduate. And to give you my profile, I was a doctor in medicine, working for 15 years in my country, and I had my own clinic running, and also I have been a head of internal medicine for two years before I came to Ethiopia, crossed the border because of political reasons, and there I didn't stop. I specialized in psychiatry and worked in one of the highest clinics there called Mindset, and worked for one year. And because I'm a refugee, I passed Pacific and came to the United States of America in 2018, and amazingly, guess what happened? In Pacific, my power, my authority to heal, to touch a patient, has been lost. I lost a license, and then it all been a curse, and it's a big blackout for me. And believe me, we immigrants have a big regret. At that time, I was regretting for coming to the U.S. at that moment, a blackout. This occurs for many immigrants, and we can expect dollars on a tree and gold on the street. Every migrant has his high expectation of this land, but when we arrive, we don't find anything. But this land give the very thing a human needs as water for fish and air for birds. U.S. gives a freedom to be and an opportunity to try. I'm grateful for this grand opportunity, which is a much superlative than the golden apple or the dollar in the tree. But in the first instance, you got to get a blackout, and I was in chaos, so I have to start from the sky from the 7-Eleven, and it was too difficult. But then I hit the Welcome Back Center, the Latino Initiative, that helping doctors has professionals to come back to the road. So, I engaged with them, they started funding me, and believe it, and then they funded me, and they paid for being an assistant, nursing assistant. And then I got an opportunity to engage in the hospital, then I worked there, and I studied, and they paid all the tuition that is needed for being a medical doctor. And I completed my all steps, and I waited and applied for residency, and I'm just offering our way to start by being a doctor. All this grand opportunity has been found by the Latino Initiative. And so, in this country, the need for health professionals is immense. It took time and money and energy to produce one nurse, let alone a doctor, and the doctors come out with a huge amount of student loan, and they are a burden. But we have seen it in the COVID era, how the health professionals was needed, and even from abroad, many people came to help. And my grandest, the tax pay is also the doctors. So, one thing which I want to say that this Latino needs a funding for $100,000 so that they may put doctors and nurses on the road.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Yusuf Battle.
Honorable council members, good afternoon. My name is Yusuf Battle, and I stand before you today as a proud resident of Montgomery County for over five decades. From upbringing in Brookville to my journey through Greenwood, Farquhar, and Sherwood High School, my roots run deep in the community. As a former student athlete at Howard University and now a clinical exercise physiologist specializing in public health, I've had the privilege of conducting wellness screenings for over 25,000 residents in our region. At 52 years old, I've come to appreciate the importance of early exposure to programs that promote physical activity, as well self-esteem and community engagement. Having witnessed the transformative power of such initiatives firsthand, I'm here to advocate for increased funding to support organizations like Girls on the Run. My personal connection to Girls on the Run runs deep as well, as both of my daughters benefited from the program during the formative years at Ashburn Elementary School. As a former athlete, I understand the invaluable lessons sports can impart. However, I also recognize that traditional athletics may not resonate with every child. Girls on Run, in my view, offers a unique and inclusive platform that caters to Girls on Run, in my view, offers a unique and inclusive platform that caters to both athletes and non-athletes alike. But drawing from my experience as a former Montgomery County Health Commissioner, a contractor with esteemed organizations such as the American Heart Association, American Cancer Society, NFL Play 60, American Diabetes Association, as well as serving as cardiovascular chair of the African-American Health Program, and a member of the Maryland State Advisory Council on Physical Fitness, I can confidently attest to the efficacy of Girls on the Run. It's a unique program. It's a program that not only promotes physical activity but also fosters character development and resilience amongst our youth, in particular, girls, young girls. As we navigate the challenges of nurturing our next generation, it's imperative that we invest in programs that demonstrate a tangible, positive impact on our community and play a pivotal role in shaping the future of our youth. Girls on Run stands as an example of this. Therefore, I implore the council to continue to support and consider increasing the funding of initiatives like this. In conclusion, I thank you for your time and attention and dedication to the well-being of our community. Together with your leadership, I hope we can continue to pave the way for a healthier future for us all. Now lastly, as a clarifier, I'm listed as Cookie Yay. And it's a daddy-and-daughter baked goods company specializing in egg-free, gluten-free, and gourmet products. My 10-year-old daughter asked me to start that at the end of the pandemic, so that is why I jumped. I support any activity that gets young people sort of taking initiative and being inspired.
Your daughter seems like a girl on the run. In many ways. We appreciate that. Thank you so much, and thanks for explaining the Cookie Yay connection. I appreciate it. Our next speaker, last on this panel, is Sandra Shatzlandis.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the county council and attendees. Thank you so much for the privilege of appearing before you today. My name is Sandra Landis, and I'm the leader of Montgomery County Chapter of Start School Leader, a national organization dedicating to ensuring school start times commensurate with health, safety, education, and equity. I've also assumed the role of belltime subcommittee chair of the MCCPTA, as both roles work synergistically to support the single mission of safe and healthy belltimes for secondary school students. What I'm requesting at this critical moment in the health of our schools and community involves swift action and leadership from this body without additional funds right now. However, I'm going to explain you what and why. I have five steps for you at the end, and you'll probably have to read some of them, because I'll start with the most complicated, which is not that hard, and then the others you'll read. That's your teaser. Our entire community is reeling from reports that led to our search for new superintendent right now. Published comments by many of you refer to systemic problems in MCPS that must be addressed, and the need for MCPS to implement evidence-based programming with associated metrics so we can see returns on investment. I'm here to speak to you about one such initiative that has been shown nationwide to yield improvements in secondary school outcomes, and that is beginning schools at 8:30 a.m. or later, consistent with the recommendations of nearly every medical group in the county, and the country, in fact, and endorsed by a number of local groups as well. We now have a legacy of three decades of research on quantitative measurable results of what has been achieved in districts that have done this, and I might add that our sister district in Anarundel and Howard have done this at no additional cost in operations. Nearly every problem confronting public schools improved when secondary school belltimes were delayed, including violent crimes, substance abuse, aggression, and mental health. We've thrown huge sums of money at these problems, but we will never buy our way out of a problem that we ourselves are creating by systemically implementing belltimes known to cause these problems in teenagers because their basic biology is incompatible with these early start times. Today, we're finding that these problems started in the schools are spilling over into the community, and thus it's taking up so much of your hearing time here today. I will say Dr. Judith Owen, sleep specialist and faculty at Harvard Medical School, has stated that to do nothing is to do harm. So to stop the cycle in Montgomery County of both elected and appointed officials actually harming our public school teens through collective inaction, I respectfully request the five actions in my testimony, and the first one is to use this initiative as a litmus test for partnering with the Board of Education. There has been some tensions there in the past. Zero cost, partner with them and report out quarterly, ask them to do that. And please join with those of us who have signed our petitions to get this done. And this more.
Thank you. We have your written testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next panel, Lori Ulrich, Karen Metzis, Camila Linares, Carrie Kasicki, and Jim Kelly. Lori, as soon as you're ready, you may begin.
I'm ready. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Lori Ulrich. I'm the president of ASME Local 2380, the staff union at Montgomery College. It's nice to see all of you here this afternoon. This council is perennially reminded of the value of Montgomery College and what it brings to Montgomery County via transformative open enrollment education and matriculation to further education, as well as skill building for job enhancements, career changes, and adaptation to changing markets. We are deeply diverse, with our entire population, faculty, staff, and students, coming from many countries, cultures, and socioeconomic backgrounds. As president of the staff union, I would like to draw particular attention to the staff portion of the approximate 3,000 people that Montgomery College employs. We are responsible for everything that undergirds the success of this institution, for making sure that buildings and grounds are clean, safe, and well-maintained, that faculty have the materials they need for instruction, that emerging technology and course design are identified and implemented, and that our libraries are robust with resources and accessible to the public. Many of the people I represent are minimally educated and people of color. This institution has a deep commitment to social justice and to equity. We put into action those values we hold dear by availing transformative resources and opportunities inward to our staff so that everyone has the chance to improve their lives through their affiliation with Montgomery College. For example, as a combined effort between ASME Local 2380, HR, and workforce development, we are on the verge of providing ESL classes to building service workers as professional development during their shifts. Now, that's important because most of them work two jobs, and there is precious little time to take classes outside of work. English proficiency is a barrier to more skilled and better-paid employment, and it is our hope that one less barrier can be a catalyst for learning computer applications, getting a trade credential, or even picking up an associate's degree as a mechanism to better provide for their families, and all of that is possible at Montgomery College. The members of ASME Local 2380 hope that the county council remembers the fiscal stewardship partnership with Montgomery College. We are asking you to recognize our fiscal prudence and our conservative budget requests by fully funding the college's fiscal year 23 budget. Thank you for your time, and I'll give you back the 20 seconds.
There you go, under budget in both counts. Karen Metzis, your next speaker.
My name's Karen Metzis, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm testifying today on behalf of the Climate Coalition, Montgomery County. We strongly support, with some amendments, the county executive's budget advancing action on climate change, including increased allocation to the Green Bank, funding for the ongoing base programs funded previously, and the increases above base budget as articulated in our written testimony. Please fund these elements as proposed to continue addressing the urgency of climate change. There are a few areas where we request you to fund that fall short in the executive's budget or that need your oversight. First, we are highly concerned that we continue to shortchange public engagement. We requested $300,000 for an effective public outreach program rather than only the $130,000 earmarked for this in the NDA. This is the single biggest mistake in the executive's budget. We ask you to consider reallocating as well an FTE in the Public Information Office to work on climate change in the future full-time. We request an additional $100,000 for DEP to expand the Weed Warrior program to control invasive vines that are choking trees and forests. This is one of the most cost-effective ways to preserve tree canopy, and is an excellent way to directly involve residents in climate action. We are pleased to see $500,000 added to DOT's budget for the backlog of stump and tree removals that prevents planting of tree trees. However, we need to know how much this will reduce the backlog and ask for a plan on minimizing backlogs in the future. Turning to other county agencies, there are a little more difficult to understand those budgets. As to Park and Planning's budget, our coalition is strongly advocating for two positions which we hope you will specifically earmark and approve. A forest conservation planner to ensure the forest conservation law that you passed unanimously last year is implemented and enforced, and a climate policy planner to ensure that they incorporate the goals of the Climate Action Plan and thrive in their various planning processes. Also, approval of the MCPS's budget should be contingent on their use of incentives provided by the Inflation Reduction Act and the Climate Solutions Now Act. We also request that you remove funding for synthetic turf fields at all new and modernized schools. And lastly, we strongly urge you to fund the Office of People's Council to enable transparent and meaningful public participation in the very difficult choices we must make, including to address climate change. So please fund all these items in full. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Camila Linares.
Good afternoon, members of the county council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am Camila Linares, a Silver Spring resident, professional actor, and a Montgomery College graduate. I'm honored to thank you for your support of Montgomery College and ask for your continued support. Please fully fund MC's FY '25 operating budget so more residents like myself can afford the education needed to succeed. My story began in South America. I was born in Colombia and moved to Montgomery County when I was five years old. I graduated from Rockville High School, then enrolled in Montgomery College, following my older sister's footsteps. She earned a degree in hospitality management. MC welcomed me as an undocumented resident. It gave me a path to a career. Initially, I enrolled in the criminal justice program so I could become a police officer. At a friend's suggestion, I took a theater class. I thought it would help me to become an undercover detective. After one acting class, I was hooked. I switched my major to performing arts and never looked back. I had found my passion. I wanted to become an actor. After graduating from Montgomery College, I transferred to the British American Drama Academy in Oxford at the suggestion of one of my MC professors. I received an amazing education and skills from both Montgomery College and the academy. Today, I am a U.S. citizen and have established a successful career in our region's theater industry. I performed and taught in numerous venues, including the Kennedy Center, Gala Hispanic Theater, First Stage, Roundhouse Theater, and Studio Theater. Through Imagination Stage, I've led theater workshops in Montgomery County public schools, and through the National Institute of Health, I have performed for hospitalized children. Currently, I'm featured in a spooky action theater production in DC. Tickets are still available. MC's performing arts program is top-notch. The professors are talented performers and gifted teachers. It was helpful that most of my professors were working actors. I still connect with them today as mentors and colleagues. I can't say enough about MC's role in my life. MC made a space for me. They picked me and helped me fall in love with the theater. I certainly gained acting skills, but I also know that MC gave me a safe space to learn to fail and then get back up and try again, a skill that every actor must have in order to succeed. I'm proud to be an MC alum, and I'm proud to thank you for supporting Montgomery College. Please continue your support to keep Montgomery College affordable so even more residents have access to discover and pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next speaker, Carrie Kasicki.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Kasicki, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Coalition for Smarter Growth. We're glad to see record levels of funding for affordable housing in this year's capital and operating budgets, and we thank the council and the county executive for consistently increasing funding for affordable housing year over year. As you heard earlier from Enterprise, affordable housing providers are ready to help meet our county's housing needs, but the number of additional homes that they're able to provide is strongly determined by the level of funding available. When projects are delayed, their costs only rise. If we hope to meet our affordable housing targets, we must significantly increase the scope of funding for affordable housing in this budget and in years to come. Meeting our housing targets will also require robust planning efforts to update master plans, perform timely reviews of proposed developments, and identify targeted recommendations to produce more housing. Many of these efforts are time-sensitive and urgently require funding, or we risk missing relatively brief windows of opportunity to realign our housing, transportation, and land use decisions with our climate and equity priorities in key areas of our county. Most notably, the Purple Line Corridor Coalition has recognized that we must not only invest in affordable housing production and preservation, but also reassess housing and land use around planned Purple Line stations before the line opens, well before the line opens, in fact, to prevent resident displacement and capture opportunities to build affordable and attainable housing. During recent master plans, planning has done great work to prioritize equitable engagement to marginalized residents, but this also means that planning efforts now take more resources than they did before. Providing enough funding for planning to program time-sensitive master plan updates like those around the Purple Line while continuing equitable in-depth engagement efforts, and then to be able to review proposed housing developments in a timely and cost-effective way, must be a priority. We ask the council to restore planning's full budget request to support this essential work. Lastly, we appreciate the council and county executive's commitment to funding our county's public transit network and fairly compensating the transit operators that we depend on for great service at a time when many systems across the nation are struggling with hiring and retention. Thank you for your continued commitment to this vital public service. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker on this panel, Jim Kelly.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Kelly, and I'm president and CEO of National Philharmonic. And one of our sellout signature performances last year was a collaboration with NASA, of which I brought that collab with me today for your enjoyment. For nearly 40 years, Nat Phil has been a premier professional symphony orchestra headquartered in Montgomery County, and since 2005, we have performed in and partnered to the Music Center at Strathmore. Our organization's vision is to share and amplify the power of music. Besides our extensive concert programming, we perform concerts for all second graders in MCPS, have a youth mentorship program for students to receive free private instruction, mentorship, and performance opportunities, run a summer string institute for talented middle and high school musicians, and provide free concert admission to over 2,000 students per season, and partner with many diverse community organizations to expand access to classical music. Past funding from the State Arts Council and the Arts and Humanities Council of Montgomery County have been used to transform our organization through an equity lens and bring diversity to our staff, our musicians, and our programming. By implementing these changes, new patrons feel comfortable coming to our concerts, and our audience and donor base is evolving and new. However, like many arts organizations across the country, and particularly orchestras, we find ourselves facing financial challenges. The recovery from COVID has been bumpy at best, and our return to full performance seasons continues to be challenging. While our concert audiences are robust, donations and financial contributions have not yet returned to pre-pandemic levels. Lower ticket prices to allow access for more patrons to attend concerts have resulted in lower earned income. Running an orchestra requires much more union labor and production than any other art form. Nat Phil's operating costs for necessary items such as concert production, union musician fees, concert hall overhead, and ticketing continues to rise, and in fact, since 2020, these costs have risen an average of 20%. This year, to offset some of these challenges, our board made the difficult decision to cancel three spring concerts, recast our budget, and reduce our administrative staff. I come before you today to respectfully ask that the council designate the National Philharmonic in the county budget for a one-time contribution of $400,000. This investment in Nat Phil's future will demonstrate civic pride in our organization and the determination to ensure its continued success. We will be able to stabilize the organization after four years of fluctuation and change, particularly now as we look forward to the 24-25 season. Nat Phil will celebrate its 40th anniversary in the county and the 40th and final year of our music director, Peter Gajewski. With your support, Nat Phil can be confident that we can continue to bring our excellent concerts, educational programming, and community events to everyone. Please reference the county executive's office study on Nat Phil for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers on this panel. Our next panel is Carl Held, Susan Grave, Maria Fez Lizarzaburo. Maria Faye Lazarzaburo, David Stein, Latonya Rich, Carl, when you're ready, begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Held. I want to thank you for the opportunity for the Climate Mobilization to testify on the proposed FY25 new funding for Buildings Climate Action. As you know, the Climate Action Plan states that the building sector contributes nearly 50% of the total greenhouse gas emissions in the county. And in order to meet the goals of the cap of 80% reduction in 2027 and 100% in 2035, we must move aggressively to reduce carbon pollution from this sector for there being any chance of reaching these targets. So, Climate Mobilization is in favor of FY25 new funding with some requested changes for buildings. We support new funding for Building Energy Performance Standards, once approved, for energy audits for under-resourced buildings. And we consider the 200,000 that the county execs have proposed as being not enough to really make a dent in that. So we'd like you to increase the funding for that item. We support expansion of the Single Family Home Electrification Pilot Program. This pilot is a key at Climate Action to achieve electrification of an estimated 200,000 homes in our county. So, I know in fiscal figure '23 and '24 that you added $1 million. You approved it. That's great. But I'd like you to add another $1 million in FY25 that isn't there right now. We also support new funding of 200K to support the DP's Energy Ambassadors that's proposed for additional community outreach to promote energy use upgrades. And in terms of Building Code compliance, we support the two FTEs that Department of Permitting Services has proposed to help increase its capacity to review and inspect Building Code compliance. Lastly, I want to discuss using green bonds to fund climate action. We encourage the county council to add, maybe not this year, but definitely next year, to act as a guarantor for the Green Bank's proposal to initially issue a $50 million bond. This support will enable the Green Bank to enter the green bond market and leverage its assets to scale up more quickly to meet the county's climate goals. I want to thank you for your support and appreciate all you've done so far on climate action. Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, when you're ready, a few minutes.
I'm Susan Grave from Imagination Library of Montgomery County and affiliate of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. And thank you for this opportunity. As a reminder, we have one mission: to get books into the hands of children from newborn to age five by mailing them free, brand-new, age-appropriate books mailed to their home, one per month until they turn five. We promote books, learning, school readiness, and early literacy. Since I spoke to you last year, there have been some very significant developments in the Imagination Library world. While we have not taken on new enrollment, we have continued to send books to children who are already enrolled and now have surpassed 105,000 books delivered since we started in 2015. We have reconstituted our board with like-minded individuals with a variety of experience in the public and private sector. With the addition of seven statewide programs, one in eight children in the entire United States now receives Dolly Parton Imagination Library books. Perhaps most importantly, we are proud of our ongoing advocacy on behalf of the Young Readers Program Expansion Act, a bill that was spearheaded by delegate Mark Corman to give grants to affiliates like ours. Clearly, the state of Maryland sees the proven role that Imagination Library can play in the community. It has taken some time, but the administration and funding related to this bill have moved from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services, go figure, to the Maryland State Library Agency. That agency last month awarded us an $86,000 grant. It comes with the challenge, though, to dramatically raise our new enrollment and to prioritize children in high-poverty zip codes. So we are asking you to match that $86,000 and signal your support. We feel very strongly that we must demonstrate the full commitment of local government in time for the state, next state, grant cycle, which will occur before the end of 2024. Parents and children love our program, and the State Library Agency is showing its belief in Imagination Library's model for young children. So please partner with us by showing your financial support for a growing and robust affiliate. Thank you.
Maria, when you're ready, you have a few minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Feliz Arzaburo. I am Identity's Newcomer Program Manager. I am here today to share a little about how Identity and the Newcomers Initiative have been assisting new arrivals, families, and individuals in Montgomery County. Our mission is clear. We support immigrant families who have fled their homes due to economic, political, and violence-related issues, transitioning to stable situations for them to adapt more successfully to living in the U.S. Let me share one of the many stories with you. This is the story of a family of four, two adults and two children, forced to leave their homeland due to political persecution and violence. They took a leap of faith and crossed the border in search of safety and opportunity. They were detained by immigration and sent to Washington, DC with the promise of a friend will shelter them. However, upon arriving in DC, the friend could not follow through on their promise, leaving the family stranded. The family found refuge in Samo, the Respite Center in Montgomery County, where they received not only shelter, but also the support they needed. With the guidance of an identity case manager, they started piecing their lives back together. The case manager worked with the family, providing direct resources and connecting them with the newcomers' network in the county, helping them in the search for more stable and affordable housing and providing financial assistance to pay parts of the rent for them to move from the shelter. Identity was there every step of the way, assisting family with the necessities such as food, personal hygiene products, and essentials for the children were provided. We also enrolled the parents in Montgomery CARES in-person and online ESO classes and provided a phone and a computer. We connected them to Casa de Maryland to get the Casa ID and Catholic Charities to receive legal assistance. The children were enrolled in School and Care for Kids program and continue attending regularly. In our follow-up with the family, they reported that one of the adults has found employment. They are paying on time the rent and utilities, and they feel financially stable. The family is incredibly grateful for the assistance they have received, and their story is just one of many success stories that highlight how the county and the community-based organization responded to the arrival of the newcomers in the area. This work in the lives of many immigrant families cannot happen without the county's support. While Identity and our sister organizations raise private funds to support this work, the county's funds provide the core funding. On behalf of the families we work with, we want to thank you for the past support and urge you to please continue to fund it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, David Stein.
President Freethan, Vice President Stewart, and council members. My name is David Stein. I'm a math teacher at Montgomery Blair High School. I'm MCA treasurer, and I am MCA president-elect. I'm here to urge you today to fully fund the budget request for Montgomery County Public Schools and to restore the cuts in the county executive's proposed budget. When I speak to you, council members, one thing I hear from you over and over again is the desire to meet the obligations of our negotiated contracts. Obviously, I agree with that sentiment, and I deeply appreciate all your commitments to our contracts. But I'm here to remind you that our contract is more than salaries. In fact, I brought one of it here. Here's our contract. It's about 100 pages long. It's actually pretty dense. And yes, salaries are in there, Article 20, with a July 1 colon and step. And obviously, those are clearly crucial to fund. But there's much more than compensation in this contract. Benefits, Article 23. Special education, Article 8. School safety, Article 11. Mental health staffing, Article 18. Equity and access, Article 8. Substitute teacher crisis, they have their own article as well. So yes, please, fund our contract. That's what the 14,000 educators of our unit expect and deserve. But please remember that funding this contract is not just colas and steps. It is giving those same members the resources that they need to provide the education that our students deserve. And not fully funding the budget will open up the possibility of forcing us back to the table to renegotiate this contract, a result that none of us want to see. Finally, council members, let me address an elephant in the room. There is a trust deficit in MCPS. The district, I think, has lost trust with educators, with council members, with community members, really with everyone. And the problem goes deeper than any one former superintendent. And I commend Councilmember Glass and others in calling for increased transparency from MCPS through both law and practice. But please do not hold our needs hostage to the frustration with the district over lack of transparency and honesty. The results of doing that, of somehow trying to find a budgetary punishment, will be to harm our members and their students, the very people who have, in many cases, been the victims of the district's transgressions. So council members, please, fully fund the school budget. Allow us the resources that we need to meet the increased challenges our students and educators face every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Latonya Rich.
Good evening, council president and council members. Latonya Rich, the CEO and co-founder of Tree of Hope Association. We've worked in the community providing peer services to individuals with substance misuse problems and co-occurring disorders. And I'm here to testify about the value of peer support and the difference that we've been making in the community. We have experienced exponential growth since opening our recovery center in July of 2022. And I'm here to request you consider an increase on our county council grant to cover the expansion of our office space. I'm a person with lived experience in our, though. I've always been drawn to service. I'm honored to have a career that serves my passion. Tree of Hope is committed not only to offer services to those in recovery, but also train those individuals to be employed as peer support workers. So what was normally a source of shame is now a source of empowerment. They walk side by side with individuals seeking recovery to help rebuild their lives. They help people create recovery plans, and they also help them customize their next steps through building through their strengths and their needs and their recovery goals. Our organization has proven to be an asset performing peer services across the county, serving all of Montgomery County, the shelter system, and Montgomery County Public Schools. We now have a youth team that serves Montgomery County Public Schools and will be in the wellness centers in 2025. But right now, we have, like, today is youth night. They're going to be in my facility tonight from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock, doing peer groups and networking with people their ages, a safe place for youth. And in the summertime, we're going to have summer sessions. Our services, and then July, we are anticipating that the steer team, which I've been the director of for the last five years, is going to be coming under our umbrella. So we're going to also have the 24-hour opioid response team. So we're kind of on top of each other right now. So we've already obtained the space upstairs, but we really need the support because we don't want to use program money, you know, that we could be using, you know, on this space. We need a little help. It's going to cut back on some of the services we can provide. We're located right here at 30 Courthouse Square. It's a perfect location next to the metro, the courthouse, of course, access to behavioral health, and many other local recovery houses and programs in the area. Since our grand opening, we've served 3,817 people in peer support, conducted 1,034 peer groups. We've trained 425 people towards certification. And we have 20 volunteers that work with us, including our four, I mean, and on top of our youth peers. And we have a list of 400 providers across the state that allows us to obtain a bed for recovery treatment in one hour. We can get someone on the way to bed in one hour.
Thank you for your testimony. Our final in-person speaker, Andrea Gallegos Montilla.
Good afternoon. I would like to begin by thanking you all for your time and attention. I am Andrea Gallegos Montilla. I am representing Samo First Response in my role as managing director of the organization. I wanted to express today my support for the budget being considered for the Newcomers Program and the robust system that is being built with the partners and direct service providers for case management services in the county, which is a core piece of the work at hand. This is a, Sam is a humanitarian nonprofit providing reception and respite services for the migrants' community arriving in Montgomery County in Washington, DC since 2022. In our work over the past 21 months, since the buses started to be sent from Texas and Arizona, we've assisted more than 4,500 individuals and 1,040 families, providing essential services and hope in times of uncertainty at our Montgomery County facility. Our programming for assisting migrants include board reception services. This is welcoming and providing them with hot meals or general medical attention, clothing, hygiene care, as well as support with onward travel and respite services for about a month, in which access to essential resources with caseworkers from our partners is vital. Their assistance is key with finding options for housing and accessing medical, social, and psychological care that reinstate a sense of security and dignity in those individuals we serve, and it allows them to keep going forward. The migrant reception and respite operation is a very fluid one. In the past five months, there has been a slight decrease in the number of families arriving in the area given that the state-sponsored buses have been paused since November 23. However, migrants have continued to arrive in increasing numbers by other decentralized means. This is tickets being purchased at the border or by recipient cities, by community referrals, et cetera, with the intent to remain in the area as their final destination. There's a key difference between the migrants arriving via bus that usually went onward travel than those currently arriving by other means, mostly remaining in the area, many without connections. This has had a significant impact in the needs of case management services as well as additional connections to housing, opportunities, and community resources. For those families remaining in Maryland, a referral to case management services is made from a specialist to our partners in the Newcomers Initiative. Caseworkers assigned to the families start their support while they are with us at the respite and continue for a brief period of time as they transition out to a new location and beyond. The respite's work is only successful if we can move families as fast as possible to more stable housing options and with access to the resources they need as they resettle. In our case, the robustness of the Newcomers program is evident since they won when we refer the families for case management and navigation to support moving in less than 31 days to a safe, longer-term accommodation. Otherwise, the respite operation will be overwhelmed with families who do not have plans or solid next steps. Another important point is that the whole system built so far is one in which each piece is interdependent from each other to move forward. We have co-designed a response and as a whole have adapted to the evolving needs. In conclusion, funding, ongoing, and expanding case management is key as effective case management is pivotal for navigating complexities for migrants and ensuring comprehensive support.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, everybody who joined us here in person. We're going to move on to our virtual testimony for this afternoon. The first virtual testimony is from Wayne Miller.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne Miller. I'm the chair of the Commission on Veterans Affairs. The Commission on Veterans Affairs wished to thank the residents of the county and the county council for their combined support for veterans for the past 16 years and the funding programs that benefit the quality of life for veterans and their families. We recommend the following: the vouchers for homeless veterans and their families. We commend the county for making a priority of the attention and the addition of permanent affordable housing for homeless veterans population. County has appropriated 650,000 per year for the effort and recommends the funding continue. In partnership with the commission, Senator Van Hollen and Senator Cargan's office and the county received 98 VASs. And this year, we received an additional 20 for a total of 118 HUD VASH vouchers worth around $1.5 million per year in housing subsidies. Also serving together, very good program provides, DHS provides some funding for their program. And we recommend that the county continue to fund this source of funding. And we recommend that the county continue to fund this source of funding for the last year's FY24 of 171,865, with a recommendation, an increase of 3% to a cost of an estimate of $177,000 to provide needed referral services for veterans and their families. Also, the Warrior Canine Connection, we know that through the PAU Act, it's an unfunded mandate, and this program provides services to veterans both locally and nationally. And once again, the impact of the Warrior Canine Connection has on veteran community merits approval of the $50,000 community grant for the county. In addition, the community will continue to provide community outreach efforts with the media to educate on many veterans' programs and services. We especially thank Barry Hudson and Neil Greensberger for the Public Information Office for their strong support in promoting and recognizing the services and sacrifices of veterans and their families. Also, that the governor's thing is the year of the veteran and their families. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and for your testimony. Is Sessina Celeci on? I don't believe Sessina is on, so we're going to move on to our next speaker, Jeannie Braha.
Thank you so much, Council President Friedson and the rest of the council, and special thanks for the little eclipse recess. My name's Jeannie Braha. I'm the Executive Director of Rock Creek Conservancy, and I'm also here with my hat on as the co-chair of the Stormwater Partners Network of Montgomery County. The Conservancy, which is based in Bethesda, works to restore Rock Creek and its parklands for all people to appreciate and protect. And Stormwater Partners Network advocates for clean water, protecting, improving, and restoring our watersheds in ways that are equitable and ecologically sensitive, improving community resilience to stormwater impacts such as storm-driven flooding and connecting communities to their backyard waterways. My comments will focus primarily on the Department of Environmental Protection and Montgomery Park sections of the budget, while recognizing that stormwater management is inherently integrated across the entirety of the county's operations. Top line, we recommend that funding for parks be increased to the same 8.3% increase relative to last year, as is proposed for other agencies. The budget as proposed will require parks to cut services relative to last year, and our parklands really drive quality of life for residents of Montgomery County. They're the places where so many discover their creek, we call it's Rock Creek, and provide critical protection of those waterways. In particular, we're concerned that maintenance of stormwater management facilities like Culvert's Outfalls and War will be delayed due to this reduction in funding, which could lead to long-term declines in water quality funding. Overall, we're pleased and supportive of the proposed DEP budget, and we support the entirety of the proposed watershed restoration budget. In particular, we're happy to see the following DEP programs be funded at the proposed amounts, including Tree Montgomery and the MS for Stormwater Facility Inspection and Maintenance. However, we have a caveat. Montgomery County has done a great job of meeting regulatory requirements for stormwater, but these requirements are not enough to protect our streams and watersheds. While some watersheds' health has been improving or staying the same, many are still declining. What streams need now is more complicated. In the summer, we see explosive storms due to climate change, and that overwhelms the kinds of projects we've installed to date. To achieve this ambition, we recognize that more funds are needed. To that end, we will also submit testimony in support of the proposed increase to the water quality protection charge, and we recommend that the council consider removing the Tier 7 cap, which we believe can be done through a regulatory process. These additional revenues should be used for activities beyond those in the current budget in order to make sure that our quality of life is protected for the future. We would also support an increase to the fee and lieu for stormwater management, commonly referred to as stormwater waivers. The current fees do not properly correspond to the cost of implementing stormwater management, particularly when we want to do that in places that are densely developed, which is important for many other sustainability and quality of life and equitable purposes. These higher fees are tolerated in many other nearby jurisdictions, and we believe Montgomery County could do so as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Josephine Benjamin.
Good afternoon, County Council President, President and the rest of the county council. My name is Josephine Benjamin, and I live in Chevy Chase. I'm asking you to support funding for special housing vouchers for single parents of children with multiple disabilities who cannot work full-time due to their children's disabilities and schedule. I arrived in the United States back in 2009 with my two children, called up hope and dreams to reunite with my husband after my third child was born in 2010. I worked three jobs, took care of my children and my family, and was taking classes at Montgomery College. Then in 2016, my fourth child was born. I started working at Johns Hopkins Hospital at Baltimore while continuing my studies at Montgomery College. Between 2018 and 19, both of my seven-year-old daughter and my toddler son both diagnosed with autism, nonverbal autism, depression, ADHD, and cyberanxiety. I looked for all the resources that school handed to me to help my children. I tried to manage everything from my work by children's therapies, all my doctors and specialist appointments, school conferences of IEP's meeting, until I could not make it work any longer. I had resigned my job. While I was full-time caregiver to my children, my marriage is ended. While I was, I tried to get a job that had flexibility so I can handle my children's schedule, but the only job I got was compensation or PRN, which is a very low income. I cannot work full-time because I have to pick up my children from the school and stay with them after this mess up. Now, looking for a place to live is a real struggle, as no one will approve of any apartment for me, for my children, due to my income. I cannot get assistance from the Department of Health and Human Services because I cannot show any acceptance later from apartment building. If I cannot find someone to co-sign my apartment application and my children, then I will end up homeless. According to the U.S. Census, approximately 28% of the single parents in this country live in poverty. A single mother with multiple children with disabilities is not only property, it's a real crisis. So I'm asking for your support, please, for special housing vouchers for a single parent and disabled children who cannot full-time work due to their disability children. Thank you for all the time and support to our communities. And a special thank you for Ms. Leah Goodman, the program manager of Montgomery County, Fatima, for the listing consultant here in Bethesda, Parker Marbus, income assistant program specialist, Ms. Carrie Bell, navigator, Department of Health and Human Services, Ms. Rainelle Miller, thank you, social worker, Ms. O'Val. Thank you, Daniel Hamer, coordinator of autism program, Alexis Walker, autism waiver services, and Karen Gibson, program management of waiver program. Thank you for all your help to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. I was going to suggest that we get your contact information to connect you to services. It sounds like you already have been connected to services, but we can have staff follow-up, make sure we have your contact information and connect you to the proper services. Our next speaker is Casey Anderson. Is Casey Anderson on? All right, we're going to move on to our next speaker. If we get connection back, we can call him back up. Our next speaker is Jason Maxstein.
My name's Jason Maxstein, and I run the blog Moderately MoCo, but today I'm testifying as a community advocate about various items in the operating budgets. My focus will be on education and public safety. Education, the first education I would like to speak on is the dissolution of the Darnstown ELC's autism program. According to a recent MoCo 360 opinion piece, it's the only program of this kind in offering children support not available in their home schools, and this dissolution comes with a significant reduction in staff and marked increase in the scope of the learning center's responsibilities. Now is not the time to reduce special services required by our most needy students, who are also greatly impacted by COVID closures. My next comment's more of a general one, as MCPs has had issue after issue in central office, with, of course, the Bittelman scandal, multiple cases of fraud in the Transportation Department, issues with electric buses, tons spent on lawsuits, both on lawyer fees and settlements, issues in the Office of Well-being, low levels of career and college readiness, and continued increased spending in central office and admin positions, while teachers have to use their own money for school supplies, paper, printing, and other issues. What I'd like to see is more money going directly to the programs and staff, working directly with students, and less waste in central office, as well as more oversight over spending by the county council to see what are the pros and cons of each expenditure, and to figure out where the waste is and reduce that to spend more efficiency on programs with the biggest impact. With savings, we need to pay special needs staff and parent educators that deal with our needy students more. These areas are always lacking, and that's because they're not paid enough based on the difficulty of their jobs. These positions also decrease stress on the general education teachers and allow those classes to continue to function with less interruptions by properly serving our higher need students. It helps those higher need students and everyone else as well. Lastly, talking with my elementary schools, PTA leaders, and other schools, they support increases in critical staff and mental health support. We often talk about the middle school and high school levels' needs, but the middle school and high school students are first elementary students, and the sooner we get to them, the better their supports will be in the long run. Moving on to public safety, by far the biggest issue is staffing. What are we doing to prevent staffing issues in the short and long term, and what else can be done? One major thing that would help is an external staffing study to determine the best way to redeploy existing resources, as well as how to improve staffing issues in the future. The council should support data-driven staffs for recruitment, retention, and redeployment. Additionally, a data-driven and methodical look at civilianizing what can be civilianized so they can hire quicker and cheaper. 911 call staffing is a major issue. Cutting vacant positions is not wise when there are many documented issues that could be helped by staffing those positions, and the average call time is increasing. We could use a workload analysis to see how many positions are truly needed before cutting so many. Lastly, the Police Accountability Board could use a complaint dashboard so the community members and the police can see what's going on, which would help with establishing trust, transparency, and accountability in that process. My written testimony includes supporting links on all of these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sister Charlotte Wagner.
Good afternoon. My name is Sister Charlotte Wagner, and I'm the Executive Director of the Newcomer Network at Catholic Charities. I'm speaking this afternoon in support of funding for the Cowdies Newcomer Initiative. I thank the executive and the council for their support for newcomers. Montgomery County was among the first to step up when the buses of migrants began arriving from Texas in April of 2022. As a county resident, I was proud of the county's rapid response in providing temporary lodging and case management support. Montgomery County also took the lead in convening a bi-weekly meeting of nonprofits and government. Thanks to strong support from the county and to the work of nonprofits, Montgomery County has avoided the chaos other parts of the country have experienced, and our collaborative work continues to bear fruit. I want to focus today on case management. These services are critical for this population, and I urge increased funding for case management. With county funding, Catholic Charities is able to hire two case managers dedicated to serving those at the migrant respite center. With additional funding, we would be able to do so much more to serve newcomers in the county. This is a population with particular needs, including for culturally appropriate services, service providers who speak their native language, and case managers who understand the immigrant experience. We consistently see that a top worry on the minds of newcomers as they arrive is how to comply with all immigration law requirements. Case managers assist them in understanding requirements, getting to their immigration appointments, and connecting with legal help. Case managers help newcomers enroll their children in school, receive medical care, apply for work permits, and seek employment and housing. Our case managers see each day the difference that the services make. One of our clients recently thanked a case manager and said, "When I talk to you, you listen to me. You don't treat me like I'm a burden." Newcomers to our country are not a burden, and it's heartbreaking that some of them are made to feel that they are. Funding to help newcomers is an investment. This population need not become chronically homeless nor chronically in need. Many arrive at prime working age. In February, the Congressional Budget Office revised its economic forecast to take into account the recent influx of immigrant workers. The office noted that in the next 10 years, GDP will be greater by about $7 trillion and revenues greater by about $1 trillion because of these newcomers. Newcomers are eager to work and to contribute, and they have a great deal to offer. Mass migration is an act of desperation. Families flee horrible circumstances they had no hand in creating. Our caseworkers see each day that families that arrive in crisis are stabilized. They're unable to comply with immigration requirements. They're empowered to find housing and employment. Newcomers who arrive needing assistance become contributing members of the community. I thank the council for its investment in newcomers and urge the council to fully support the county executive's recommended allocation for FY25. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Our next speaker is Deborah Monk.
Good afternoon. Whoops, unmuted myself. Good afternoon, members of the county. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Good afternoon, members of the county council. I'm Deborah Monk, a community member and a volunteer for Interfaith Works, a nonprofit that runs most of the county shelters with contracts from the county. Several months ago, I visited my daughter, who lives in a town near Salem, Oregon. One afternoon, we visited the Capitol and picnicked in a park beside the Willamette River that runs through this fertile central valley of the state. Across the river, I could see a vast city of tents, land that had been set aside for homeless people to camp. The banks of the river were littered with debris. This sight startled me and made me realize how grateful I am to live in a county that provides adequate shelters for those experiencing homelessness, for whatever reason. I am proud that Interfaith Works can touch the lives of so many in our community who lack the basic needs of life. But for me, the larger question is, how can we prevent, or at least minimize homelessness in the first place? Several programs at Interfaith Works are showing promising results in addressing this need. The Essential Services Center provides clothing and food. The Connections Program gives rent and utility assistance, at least until the funds run out. IW distributed $88,000 last year, last quarter, but as of last week, it only had $35,000 left. Given the need in the community, the program will run out of funds by the end of the month or early May. A program that shows tremendous promise is the Vocational Services Program, providing career counseling and job placement to individuals living in shelters. A couple of years ago, Interfaith Works, through the generosity of private donors and workforce in Montgomery, began to offer stipends to cover the cost of certification courses and pay participants minimum wage for the time spent in classes. This enabled many more individuals to participate because it helped to defray costs of childcare and transportation, and also lost wages. The goal of the program is to enable individuals to increase their earning power beyond minimum wage in order to better address the high living costs in our area. The results are very encouraging. In the past four years, 400 people have been employed, adding $10 million to our economy. Needless to say, the demand for this program outstrips the capacity of Interfaith Works to provide this service. Currently, there's a six to eight-week waiting list. My purpose today is to ask the county council, in consideration of how to deploy limited resources to fund IW's programs that are addressing this growing homeless problem. I believe in the axiom, if you give a man the fish, he can eat for a day; if you teach him to fish, he can eat for a lifetime, and so can his family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Clara Lovett.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Clara Lovett, I live in Chevy Chase, specifically the village of Friendship Heights. I'm a member of the advisory council for the newly created Friendship Heights Urban District. But today, I'm addressing the council as a member of the Board of Directors of the Montgomery Parks Foundation, a 501(c)(3) entity that supports the Montgomery Parks. This afternoon, you have heard so many voices in support of the parks and so many reasons for supporting this great resource that we share as residents of the county. So I don't need to repeat what you've heard from other people. I do want to make two observations. A foundation such as the one I have the pleasure of serving does not replace the public funding that the parks need, but we can assist in important ways. For instance, we can help the staff of the department finance projects, new projects that may have some risk, that may be not quite appealing for support from public funding. And we allow the staff of the department then to evaluate the outcome. And we allow the staff of the department then to evaluate the outcome of these programs, then to decide whether to go forward or not. The other thing we do is encourage donors, citizens who use the parks, not only to make donations, but often, they will do it to memorialize family members or colleagues who liked the park system, who liked the outdoors, who enjoyed the natural resources that the park system makes available, and who are therefore memorialized by supporting the parks. Another point I want to make, and it's been made before, but let me repeat it. The Parks Department will have an even more important role in our county in the next decade or two than it has historically. And the reason is that the county is becoming more urbanized, that certain parts of the county are going to be the places where younger families settle. Certain parts of the county are less well-served by open spaces and green spaces. So we will be building newer parks, probably small, and we will continue to keep up and to improve what we have inherited from past generations. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker, Kelly Butzak.
Good afternoon, President Friedson and county council members. My name is Kelly Butzak. I am here speaking today as Operations Director, representing Story Tapestry's out of Poolsville, Montgomery County. On behalf of Story Tapestry's, thank you for your leadership and support of the Arts and Humanities in Montgomery County. As you may know, Story Tapestry's is an arts service organization that meets mental health, education, digital equity, workforce, and economic development objectives through the use of the arts as a tool to support personal and community development for individuals of all ages. Since becoming a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in 2010, our programs and services have impacted over 3 million lives, over 250,000 individuals each year, ages 2 to 102. I am here to first request a $200,000-based budget allocation for Story Tapestry's to provide continued capacity-building support in three areas. One, workforce development for early childhood educators. Story Tapestry's provides opportunities for early childhood teachers in Montgomery County to earn three clock hours of continuing education through free professional development courses that we are accredited through the Maryland State Department of Education. Such programs not only ensure job security for those educators, but also empowers them to obtain personal, career, and economic advancement. Secondly, workforce development to provide continued training, coaching, and mentorship for the aspiring teaching artists that we work with to increase their skill set, obtain employment, and earn a living wage. And thirdly, expansion of our CHART program, an innovative approach to the mental health crisis that includes conducting a countywide needs assessment and training a network of 20 master teaching artists to use the arts as a tool in trauma response practices that provide mental health supports. These training strategies, which are led by a professional psychologist with arts integration experts, counselors, social workers, and certified health professionals, will be incorporated into every program that those master teaching artists lead across the county. This project utilizes an arts approach to community-wide culture, practices, and policies that ensure that everyone across our county has access to mental health tools. Such work is being piloted with our partners at the Latin American Youth Centers and the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless in several senior communities, and your funding allocation will enable us to scale up the program through additional collaborations countywide. We also ask that you please allocate $700,000 in additional funds for re-granting through the Arts and Humanities Council of Montgomery County above the county executive's FY 2025 proposal to address a projected $900,000 increase in demand for grant funding over FY '24 and ensure an equitable recovery for our diverse cultural sector and the creative workforce it employs in Montgomery County. And finally, we ask council's support of President Friedson's jobs initiative to consider creating jobs, increase equity-focused areas, and foster innovation in workforce development.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you to everybody, nearly 60 speakers this afternoon. We are now closing the first of our five public hearings on the operating budget. We will now recess as a council until 7:00 PM, and we will return for another public hearing on the FY '25 operating budgets. And so with that, we are adjourned until 7:00 PM this evening. Thank you.